...minutes, but yes, we will be ready.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is the May 6th meeting of the San Clemente City Council. We're going to be going into closed session. Before we do, we'll take public comments. Let the record reflect that all five members are present. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do have one public comment. Amanda Quintanilla.
Okay, can we hear that person now, please?
Hi, good afternoon. When I saw this, I just always have to guess about what this is about. Next slide, please. So I guess there's a threat to security of public buildings, threat to security of essential public services, and a threat to the public right of access to public services or public facilities, or a threat of critical infrastructure controls. Next slide, please. So I was able to attend the Neighborhood Watch meeting of Monday, April 28th. And at that meeting, there were some concerns because of what a deputy had mentioned, that he originally stated that he had walked past the park and saw ten teenagers, maybe between 15 to 19 years old. And then he changed his statement later on upon clarification that he saw ten to fifteen of them out there in the middle of the parking lot when he arrived. So I really don't know. I know I was out there about 5:30, I got there. And what I saw was these kids playing soccer. They were dribbling. This was from this Monday. But the same thing was last week, the picture. But I think they had some cones to go dribbling inside and out. So I don't know what this is about, but I hope it's not related to the Neighborhood Watch meeting there. But there has been a concern, though, at public meetings at public facilities or that are owned by City of San Clemente. And one notable one was regarding council member came in, and I brought this up to the attention last week, where, and there was an article on that too, regarding the San Clemente Times, where a council member made allegations with, between Zen Wu, myself, and another candidate, which she identified herself last week, the last city council meeting. And I just hope that when things like that occur, that it sends out a message to the public that that's acceptable behavior and it's not slamming the table in front of my face and under Zen Wu or making allegations with all three members, candidates, and members of the public, that is not, that's uncalled for and it shouldn't be happening. And I think, you know, you can conduct yourselves in a professional manner. One thing is getting passionate. The other one is actually, you know, slamming the table to get a reaction. And if I had not been recording, taking audio of that, I probably would have called the deputies. I stayed there for over 45 minutes because I was concerned whether I was going to be followed. So, and I did not mention anything during my campaign because I didn't want any negative, any retaliation from that. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other public comments?
There are none.
Okay, we're going to move into closed session. To do that, we're going to use this facility as our closed session meeting room. So I'd like to ask all the members of the public that are not city employees, requested to be here by the city manager, to please exit the room now. And we'll be opening the room back up in a little over half an hour, and you'll be able to come back in prior to our reconvening at 5:30.
Okay, let's open the — are we recording? Oh, our Madam Clerk is not present here. Could you confirm that we're on the record, Jason? No, you can't. As soon as we can confirm that we're on the record, we'll begin. Okay, well, is there anyone? Andy, can you confirm we're on the record or we need to wait for the city clerk?
Mayor, you can begin the meeting. We just want to make sure it's being recorded and so that we can take — so we can complete the meetings.
Right. We'll see if the sound booth there can confirm that. We're on the record, okay. Good evening, everyone. This is the May 6th meeting of the City Council. Let's call the meeting to order. And first, we'll begin with the invocation by Associate Pastor Steve Pascoe at Calvary Chapel Church. Pastor?
Good evening. Thank you. Let's pray. Father God in heaven, the God in whom we trust, as it says on the wall there, we thank you for this wonderful city. We thank you that even though we don't always see it, you are at work in our community. We thank you for Pastor Knoblock and the council and staff and everyone who serves and gives so generously of their time. We ask for your blessing on them and their families for safety and peace. We ask for peace in these proceedings. We thank you for our police services through the Sheriff Department and pray for your peace and safety and protection of them and wisdom and understanding as they go about their duties protecting the community. And we ask humbly, Lord, for your wisdom. The only true wisdom we can have comes from you, and we ask for your wisdom in all these proceedings and the pursuit of righteousness. And we just bless this evening in the name of our Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mr. Cabral, would you please pledge a flag?
I sure will. Pledge your hand over your heart. Start.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the record show that all council members are present. We have no special presentations. Mr. Enmire, did you say there was a cat?
Yes. We do have Jennifer from Acasa here with a quick presentation from the animal shelter, usually reserved for our council reports, but if we can add her—
We can cover that under oral communications right now.
Yes, that'd be fantastic.
Hello, everyone. Thank you for having us. So I'm Jennifer from the San Clemente Dana Point Animal Shelter, and I brought a couple of kittens for you today. This is Corky and Mahoney. They're both brothers. And they're two of a litter of eight kittens that we had born at our shelter, and they're currently in foster. They'll be ready for adoption in a couple of weeks along with the rest of their litter, and we have a lot of kittens in foster right now. So come check us out. It's getting that time of year where we're going to have a lot of kitties ready for adoption, ready for their new homes. And if you in particular aren't looking to adopt and make it permanent, we always need foster. So you can always call the shelter if you're interested in fostering with these two little boys. Tell everybody, a couple of weeks, they'll be ready for their new homes. So thank you for having us today.
Very much.
Thank you.
Cute kittens. Okay, I'll entertain a motion, waiving and reading the full of all resolutions and ordinances. Do we have a motion?
Second, there are no other oral communications?
Yes, there are. I don't think there were any other oral communications.
We are — yeah, we do have a couple of speaker parts.
Oh, I apologize. Let's have the oral communication. Let's hear from them. Thank you.
Michael A. Johnson, followed by Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Lois McNichol.
Okay.
Well, I am Michael A. Johnson. I live in San Clemente. And this bothered me enough to come and speak about it. Councilman Enmire's notes on violence made me wonder about violence in San Clemente. Then I vividly recalled a violent incident that I was witness to. It occurred at the weekly San Clemente Coffee Chat, the beachside coffee chat. I'm always early to this gathering. 1:00 a.m. during the campaign for council seats, I arrived and saw a man sitting on a chair separately from our usual circle. I wondered if he was to be our speaker. He appeared tense. He was holding papers in his hand. I paid no real attention and was not aware of who he was. Soon, he was out of that chair like a flash, straight to the table where Amanda, one of the candidates for council, was sitting. He slapped the table in front of her so hard, then he was in her face yelling, extremely angry. I was so shocked that I did not see him approach the other two women who were also running for city council. I stood up, backed away. People were yelling, "Leave! Go!" The chat leader opened the door, motioning for him to leave. I do not know if he was actually asked to leave. He has not returned to the coffee chat. I don't know if he regrets this incident, but I do know he has never apologized to the three women, to all of us who were affected by this. As a registered nurse, my assessment of Mr. Lefler was he needed anger management. On the other hand, our city manager, Mr. Hall, Mr. — our mayor, Mr. Knoblock, Mr. Wu, and also Mr. Enmire, when he doesn't have to be at the high school at 8:00 a.m., have attended the coffee chat, careful about their boundaries of their positions. They have participated in a thoughtful, respectful manner. After Mr. Lefler explained at length at the last city council meeting his actions as regards Mr. Wu, he spoke in a silent way. He laid his right arm onto the dais. Then he slumped onto his extended arm so that his body turned into a curve and his back was to Mr. Wu during the meeting. I do hope no one is discouraged from running for council in the future by hearing about this, especially our San Clemente females. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, please.
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by Susie Whitelaw.
Megan, I hope you'll queue up. Sorry about that. Two slides over, please. So at the last city council meeting, the council member made disparaging comments regarding council member Wu, stating, "Are you a council member entitled to a high degree of relevance and importance because of your position?" In this case, I say definitely not. Your participation at this event was as a spectator, and your rights were no more or less than any other attendee. There was no entitlement. He further stated, "Being elected doesn't come with entitlements. You're not entitled to listen to. You're entitled to listen to and represent the residents of the city in the best manner possible at that moment." However, on March 20th, the San Clemente Downtown Business Association had their quarterly meeting. meeting. Three city staff members were on the agenda to speak and the city manager. However, Councilmember Cabral went up to speak, and no one objected. The members of the public could have raised issues that could have been brought up before the city council. This seems to be a double standard, allowing one city council member to speak at a public event and not allowing the other one to ask a question or make a comment. Both meetings were held on city-owned property with proper notification to the public. Next slide. This is part of my last city — my last PowerPoint presentation that I did not properly finish. The city attorney opined that, under the First Amendment, legislators are given the widest latitude to express their views on issues of policy since debate on public issues should be uninhibited, robust, and wide open. So it gives more — more powers to the city council members to speak. Next slide, please. The city attorney cites DeGrassi versus the City of Glendora. As a council member, she was excluded from council meetings issues that involved her legal case. It was not because of her viewpoint, and it did not violate her First Amendment. However, this analysis is inaccurate when applied to Zen Wu. Next slide, please. DeGrassi was a seated council member who was excluded from city council meetings, especially close session meetings involving whether the city would provide legal representation for her at its expense, similar to a previous council member. The court in DeGrassi stated that free speech rights may be broader for elected officials. She stated the following. While the free speech rights of elected officials may well be entitled to a broader protection than those public employees, generally the underlying rationale remains the same. Legislators are given the widest latitude to express their viewpoints on issues of policy. In her exclusion, did not result in her ability to speak out in public or represent her constituents, but could have violated her First Amendment rights. Here, Councilmember Wu was prevented from speaking in public before constituents. This is a vital difference. Next slide, please. Once a — oh, am I done? Okay, sorry. Thank you.
Not at all. Okay. Lois McNichol, followed by Susie Whitelaw.
And I'm starting out by talking about hardening Hawaii beaches because we're going to be doing the same thing here in San Clemente. Next slide. And it seems our first response is to put up a wall in order to save the beach, but that does the opposite. Beach sand erosion increases, and the surf ricochets off the wall and sends the beach sand back into the ocean. Beach sand is a fluid process that changes with seasonal surf direction. Next slide. Human efforts are even worse. A groin is a structure built perpendicular to the beach in an attempt to block the longshore current. It works great for one side, but the other side of the beach erodes away much faster. Worse still are breakwaters, which have been suggested by consultants during a San Clemente city council meeting. A breakwater blocks the surf entirely and can cause a stagnant ocean. A breakwater will destroy recreational surf, which we live in — we live out on that here in San Clemente, cause stagnant beach water and disrupt all the nearby beach currents. The next slide. Next slide. Here's — Okta is proposing to hard armor seven miles of coastal rail segment from San Diego to Orange County border to Dana Point. Drawbacks: more coastal erosion, bluff failure, ongoing risk from storm surge, and landslides on the landward side of the tracks. Next slide. Surf riders have been urging Okta to relocate the railroad for years because it is necessary, and it's the only way that we are going to get rid of sand erosion in San Clemente or any other beach. Okta has failed to take the necessary steps, although the common law public trust doctrine, the Coastal Act, and the California Constitution all state the public has a right to access and enjoy these special places, and the right cannot be infringed upon by non-public trust uses such as the railroad. Next slide. Laws. Okay, so we have the United States Supreme Court, Illinois Central, and they specifically determine that the transportation of passengers in freight did not — was not going to be allowed if it infringed upon the rights of people to access the beach. It specifically stated that.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Susie Whitelaw.
Hi, Dr. Susie Whitelaw with Save Our Beaches, San Clemente. Amen, Lois. I completely agree with you. I have a presentation. I'm also here to talk about the OCTA project. They have put out at least, I think, 10 carloads of rock on our beach so far, and for a large part, they have been doing a good job for a large part of it. Next slide. However, there is some areas where they seem to be widening the revetment, and that was part of the promises, that they would not widen the revetment. The area in the white rock there, it sticks out about 10 feet further than the rest of the revetment, and maybe it's in progress. Maybe they're going to re-stack those rocks up and stay within the pre-existing revetment. Next slide. The great thing about the emergency permit is that they are also requiring the 240,000 yards of sand be placed by August 8th, 2025. And that sounds a little bit quick for that to happen. I'm really hoping that it will happen. One of the last things I'd like to mention is the emergency permit. The Coastal Commission is still considering giving an emergency permit for the rock to be dumped on State Beach. And what they're dumping on Mariposa is about 100 carloads of rock. What they want to dump on State Beach is 1,000 carloads of rock. That's a hell of a lot of rock. Then they also are looking at — next slide, if I have one. They're looking at a seawall, a vertical seawall, and that's somewhat appealing because it takes less footprint, except that — next slide. The footprint of the seawall, as they've designed it, is actually going to be 40 feet out, and so the revetment is 30 — I mean, 50 to 60 feet out. The seawall is 40 feet out, which is still a huge footprint. It's an ugly, ugly seawall. It does — will cause more erosion than the rock revetment. Even the rock revetment, because it's sloping and it's rough, it will absorb some of the wave energy. This type of wall, if you don't keep a wide sandy beach in front of it, the waves are going to crash against it, have a 100% reflection and turbulence and erosion. We're also really concerned about the height of the seawall. OCTA in 2021 put out a — their plan for climate change, and they had a — like a 20-foot-high seawall from the tracks up 20 feet high. It was as high as the train, and that would be just a horrible thing to put on our coastline. Then we — no matter we have any trail, we're not going to see any ocean. Thanks.
Thank you.
Final speaker is Susie Lance.
Hi, good evening, city friends. Just a quick thank you to not only the mayor and the council and the city staff for allowing the chamber to serve you at the State of the City luncheon this past Friday. It was really informative. Mayor, thank you for your presentation, and also thank you for helping to make it fun. I think we accomplished both, so we really enjoy being able to provide that event for all of you and look forward to this long-term partnership. Couple of other things the chamber has coming up. We're hosting a mixer next Tuesday from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the San Clemente Villas by the Sea, and then next Thursday, we're hosting our city manager, Andy, for a coffee, so the community is invited to register for both of those events. We'd love to have you, and thank you again.
Thank you for what you do for our city and the chamber. You're doing a great job. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, point of order. I'd like to bring up an issue that maybe my fellow council members might want to weigh in. I've had conversations with residents who were disappointed that we have moved the council comments to the very end of the meeting. In the past, we've been doing it at the beginning, where most people are listening, and I would like to move those to the beginning like we were doing before, with the hope that our reports should be brief, you know, basically what we do. I don't think we have to really explain every meeting that we go to and what the policies are and all that, but if I can get agreement here, I'd like to move the item.
Yeah, that's not — that item is not on the agenda for consideration at this time. I understand the need, the concern. The agenda was set because our council presentations were taking a lot of time. I have no objection with moving it to the front of the agenda with maybe a timeframe, but I think that would be properly placed at the — for request for consideration. And I can begin doing that, and the city manager and I set the agenda, so I can begin doing it at the next meeting. But to consider that now is not on the agenda, so is the chairman. I would suggest we move on.
I appreciate that. Can I just ask a question of the city attorney? We've moved the order of items numerous times since I've been here.
So you could bring a motion to move an item on the agenda, which I think is what the request was.
Okay. Well, I would suggest in — I guess, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll move that we move item 13 to the front of the agenda — on the agenda at this time.
Okay, I would suggest a substitute motion, that we keep the agenda as agendized, and at the next meeting, we can begin that protocol.
I'm second.
Substitute motion.
Okay. Let's call for the substitute motion first. All in favor, say aye.
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 Malposed?
No.
Okay, that matter — are you voting, Victor?
No.
No? Okay, the substitute motion passes 3 to 2. The next item is consideration of agendizing items requiring immediate action. Are there any, gentlemen? If not, then let's hear from a closed session report, Madam City Attorney.
Thank you. The council met in closed session, and there was no reportable action. Thank you.
Staff communications? Was that a no?
No.
Okay, thank you. The next item is our public hearings, item 7. The first item is public hearing to consider the adoption of the 2529 Consolidated Plan, including the amended Citizens Participation Plan, the 202526 Annual Action Plan for expenditures of community development block grant funds, and the 202529 Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing. With that, let's open the public hearing, and we have a brief staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. Adam Etamian, Community Development Director. I am joined tonight by our CDBG consultant, Mike Lenaris. I have a short presentation highlighting the item before you, and we will be prepared to answer any questions afterwards. Each year, the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development determines the amount of CDBG funds the city receives based on various community factors such as population, household income, and housing needs. Every five years, the city is required to prepare a consolidated plan for this effort. The consolidated plan is carried out annually through the Annual Action Plan. The city council adopted the current consolidated plan in May 2020, and we are in the current final year of that consolidated plan. To continue to receive CDBG funds from HUD, the city must adopt both a consolidated plan and the associated fiscal year 2025-2026 Annual Action Plan. Due to the delay in the approval of the 2025 federal budget, HUD has not notified the city how much it will receive in fiscal year 2025 to '26. The city is allowed to estimate this amount in order to submit our reports to HUD, and at this time, planning the amount that staff has identified is approximately $300,000 in next year's CDBG allocation. Included with the consolidated plan is the Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing. This document is a five-year plan that includes an analysis of housing patterns and demographic data. This information is used to identify and address fair housing issues and forms the foundation for promoting equitable housing opportunities. The Orange County Assessment of Fair Housing serves as the city's primary policy document for achieving these goals. Additionally, as a recipient of CDBG funds, the city is required to maintain a Citizen Participation Plan. This plan outlines the policies and procedures the city will follow to encourage public participation in the CDBG program. So that covers the four specific items that are part of this package. The 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan contains updated goals and objectives with CDBG funding priorities falling into four general categories. One is public improvements. Two is housing and commercial rehabilitation. Three is public services, and four is program administration. The 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan is the first year of the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan cycle. It is the city's one-year expenditure plan for the CDBG funds, and in that plan, we've identified the following allocations based on those four areas within the consolidated plan. The first is public improvements, and the Annual Action Plan allocates $132,427 for neighborhood sidewalk improvements. The second is under housing and commercial rehabilitation. The Annual Action Plan allocates $75,000 in CDBG funds plus program income received during the year for the housing rehabilitation loan program. With these funds, three owner-occupied housing units are anticipated to be rehabilitated during the year. Under public services, the city can allocate up to 15% of its annual CDBG budget for public services, such as social services. Based on the estimated next-year CDBG grant, we would anticipate up to $45,000 being available for public service grants. The city has a process with the, what we call the Social Services Budget Committee. That has historically been made up of two members of the Human Affairs Committee and one member of the city council. In the last couple of years, it's been Councilmember Enmeyer, along with Mike and myself. This year, there were five eligible applications that were submitted. All five have been identified for some funding, and these include Age Well Senior Services for $6,440, Camino Health Center for $12,000, Family Assistance Ministries for $14,000, Silver Connections, which is a — is a program that will provide socialization and physical activities for adults aged 62 or older, and this is a newer program that the City of San Clemente is implementing. That one is for $7,060, and the Parentis Foundation proposed funding is $5,500. Additionally, under administration, the city may allocate up to 20% of its annual CDBG grant for administrative services, and we are proposing to utilize that in the — for an amount of $60,000. Additionally, HUD requires the city to maintain a Citizen Participation Plan to receive CDBG funds. There are a few amendments that are proposed in this year's consolidated plan. Most of them are rather minor modifications to the last consolidated plan. However, in certain situations, the city is allowed to amend the consolidated plan or annual action plan without holding a public comment period or hearing, including reallocating CDBG funds from one activity to another. HUD allows the city to establish this reallocation threshold. The current threshold is 45% of the current year CDBG allocation. Staff is proposing— Staff is proposing that this be amended to increase this threshold to 55%. And with that, staff recommends that the city council approve resolution number 25-47, which will accomplish the following: approve the 2025 to 2029 Consolidated Plan with the amended Citizen Participation Plan and the 2025 to 2026 Annual Action Plan. It will also receive and file the 2025 to 2029 Orange County Regional Assessment of Fair Housing. Authorize the city manager to submit the consolidated plan and execute related documents. Accept grant revenues of an estimated $312,427 from HUD. Authorize a related budget appropriation for such funds. And authorize staff to make proportional changes to the above based on actual funding. That last item is, has been placed in the annual action plan on an annual basis. Since we don't know what the actual funding is going to be, if it's more than, whatever proportion, it's more than 300,000 or less than, we would reallocate all of these funds on a proportional basis. With that, I'll conclude my presentation, and we are available for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Community Development Director. Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff before we hear public comments? Victor?
Is this a public hearing?
This is a public hearing.
Okay, all right.
I just wondered if there were any questions before we hear from the public.
I do have a couple of questions.
Why don't you go ahead for the benefit of the public, and then they can, when they respond, they'll have as much information as possible.
So my understanding is that the amounts that were allocated this year were allocated last year? I mean, for this year's budget, were allocated last year. Is that correct? The money for AgeWell, Camino Health Center, Family Assistance Ministries, when were those allocated?
That was through the Social Services Grant Committee. That, those amounts were identified during this fiscal year, but they apply to the funding we'll receive for next fiscal year.
Okay. You're talking about 2026?
Yes.
Okay. That's not the understanding that I had. I think I was told in my briefing that something a little bit different, so.
That was my mistake. That's correct.
Yeah. This is what I'm trying to get clear. Now, is this funding also for the next five years, or just for this one, one year?
The funding that we've identified for those four topical areas, being public services, administration, housing, rehabilitation, and such, those are all for the next fiscal year. Those are all contained within our annual action plan. Every year that we are receiving CDBG funds, we'll be, we'll be providing the council another annual action plan for the following fiscal year.
So if someone was interested in applying, they're actually applying for 2027, if they're going to apply now.
The funding opportunity is not available at this time for applications. That's a process that we generally start towards the end of the year, with applications being due towards the end of December, and then we start processing and reviewing those in January and February.
Okay. How do we notify the public of the opportunity?
There's a few ways. We post some information on the city's website. We have a list of potential applicants, either because they're previous, previous applicants. And then Mike can probably speak a little bit more on some of the other aspects of the public messaging.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Councilmember, yes, Adam indicated, usually we contact any agency who has applied in the past or is a current recipient, make them aware when the application will be available. There's also a public notice that the city will put into the newspaper. And most of the local nonprofits will know right around the end of the calendar year is typically when most cities are starting to prepare for the upcoming fiscal year cycle. So they're usually contacting the city throughout the year as well. And staff typically will keep a list of those agencies at contact, so when we have the application ready to roll, we will, you know, make sure that they get the.
So how many applications did we get this year?
This year, I believe we had five.
Just five?
Yes, yeah. We had inquiries from a couple of other agencies. One of them was actually a for-profit business, which is not eligible for CDBG for this funding. And then there was, I think, a second one that had contacted the city, who was still working on obtaining their nonprofit status. And just based on past experience, it's, we want to make sure that they have all of their nonprofit information already in place when they execute the agreement with the city.
Who would that be?
It's a senior, senior program. I don't recall off the top of my head the name of the organization.
Okay. I think I know the name. I think I gave him.
Yeah, I believe it was San Clemente, San Clemente Village.
Yeah. And I gave him some information based on what I learned about this and the availability. And I was given the wrong information, apparently.
Staff, in fact, we were just, we just had a little briefing before we came up here, and I think they had just reached out to staff, city staff, and told them they had finally obtained all their information. So I think, I would anticipate they'll be applying next year if they have an interest in applying.
I think your inquiry is, I think, is a good one. I think the public, the broad public needs to be aware of this and have an opportunity to compete. So you mentioned that the notification was given in the local newspaper, local San Clemente Times. Is there some way to expand that? I don't know if it's a, if it's a one-inch squib, one line, or if it's a half a page or a quarter-page ad, but seems to me it should be as broadcast as loudly as possible. Do you know the extent of our current communication with the public?
I think typically the city uses an eighth of a page ad. I think that's.
How large of an ad?
One-eighth of a page.
One-eighth of a page?
Yeah.
Yeah, my concern, my concern is if there's this money available, and we're only getting five applicants, and they're same five problem, same five applicants every year, there's probably other people that are just being left out of the, that are doing good things in this community.
Absolutely.
And should be made aware of it.
Mr. City Manager, do you need council direction to make sure that we have a half-page or a full-page ad? I think when we're giving 300,000-plus out, 500 or $1,000 advertising for our community wouldn't be a bad thing. Do you need, do you need authority for that, or can we just kind of, if, I'm reading the sense, I agree with you completely, Victor, that the community needs to know, and a half-page, full-page ad, now's the time. If you're interested, let's.
Full-page, full-page ads.
No, you guys have, I think it's been made abundantly clear, you want us to expand this program and make sure people understand that this money is available for.
I think that's important. I think that's very important, and I think that's the.
The consensus, yeah.
All right.
Yeah, and I do apologize to Councilmember Cabral. There's a lot of moving parts in between a five-year consolidated plan and an annual CDBG implementation plan, and I did give him some improper information. I apologize for that.
Any other questions of staff before we hear from the public? Mr. Wu?
Yes, I do have one question. In certain situations, the city is allowed to amend the consolidated plan or annual action plan without holding a public comment period or hearing, including reallocating CDBG fund from one activity to another. And you're proposing the threshold to be increased from 45 to 55%. Can you give us a typical situation that you would have to do that?
Yes, that's a great question. We actually did this recently. I think it was the last, it was.
Yeah, I can.
Yeah.
Thank you, Council. Yes, actually, we, the city recently amended the consolidated plan using this amendment process to reallocate funds that were basically uncommitted to a new project. It was to do ADA improvements at the downtown community center. Because the city had not, when we did the initial action plan, you know, a year ago, that plan, that project was not envisioned. During the course of the year, the funding became available, and capital project was completed. It didn't spend all its funding. We were able to close out the fiscal year, capture little pieces of funding from different activities. So the city had a good pool of money available, so we wanted to put it to use. So we wanted to add this new project. That's one of the requirements, a new project, so we had to go through this amendment process to let the public know we're moving this unprogrammed money for this new activity. That's, that would be an example of what. It would have been, let's say, a small amount, maybe a capital project was short, $20,000. The city has the ability to amend it. We still have to do the amendment and notify HUD. We just don't have to go through the formal public hearing process and comment period to make those amendments. We still have to make those disclosures as part of our year-end reports. But it's when you get these larger dollar amounts that HUD has said, you need to make sure the public is aware of that, that, that you're making these major moves, and we're allowed to set our threshold, and that's what we're doing, is just adjusting that threshold. But those would be some examples of some, of why you would do this, and substantial amendment.
Okay, thank you. Mr. City Manager, did you want to expand on that at all?
Yeah, because it's kind of related to that and a little bit to the topic that Councilmember Cabral was talking about, there are limitations about how much of your CDBG funding you can use for, for community programs, and I believe that amount is 15%. So I just, I want to make sure that the public understands that we can't, that there will be limitations on how much of this money can be given out to the various nonprofits in the community, and I believe that's capped at 15% of our allocation for CDBG. So, again, complicated but very effective program in our community, but I wanted to make sure, as we were talking about reallocating and moving money around, what we can't do, I think we max out our 15% that we give out to the community, and that's a maximum amount that we could give out.
Any other questions of staff, gentlemen? If not, let's hear from the public. Do we have any speakers, Madam Clerk?
We do not.
Okay, then I'll entertain a motion, and before I do, I'd just like to thank the members of the Allocation Committee, Mark, you and others that have worked to identify these nonprofits and the work that they do and the benefit they provide to our community.
Can I say also, I was at that meeting, and these allocations that are there now were nothing like the way it started, and kind of throwing things around. I think Mark and Rosemary Salas and Stuart Anderson really did a great job of figuring it out and coming to a meeting of the minds, so.
Thank you for that. Yeah, it was a wonderful opportunity to show how we can come together, coming in with differing opinions, but then showing, hey, you know, we can compromise here, and we can come together with a good solid number for everyone involved. It was fantastic, excuse me, a fantastic experience. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we entertain a motion, can I ask the maker of any motion to please add specifically that next year's allocation request include at least a full-page ad in the San Clemente Times as part of that motion?
Sure. I will make the motion to adopt resolution number 2547 with a modification to include a full-page ad in next year's advertisement. Do you want to read the whole?
No. You don't want to do it?
I'll second that.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Enmire, seconded by Mr. Cabral. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. Next item is unfinished business. I don't think we have any, Mr. City Manager, that you have any? Okay, the next item is new business. Item 9A is a consideration of potential introduction. This is the first reading of an ordinance to impose term limits on city commissioner and/or committee members.
Mr. Bear, I have to make a disclosure, or a request, actually. Since my wife is on the Planning Commission, and I'm going to have to, I will recuse myself on any decision made on that, could we bifurcate the Planning Commission from the rest of the committees and commissions?
You want to hear the rest of the committee? I think bifurcating is important with your, with Karen serving on our Planning Commission. You want to hear the Planning Commission, the other part first, and the Planning Commission later, and you can step out of the room during that part?
I think that would be great.
Okay, all right. Well, let's, let's bifurcate this meeting, then. We're discussing, our committees and commissions accept the Planning Commission at this point. So the council asked that this come up. Would you like to start, Victor? Unless there's anyone else? Go ahead.
Do we do a public comments first, or do we do discussion?
Let's, let's have the discussion, and then we'll let the public comments, they'll have the benefit of our conversation before they speak, so let's take that afterwards.
Well, I'm going to speak to a couple of the committees where I don't agree that term limits are appropriate. One is the committee I sit on, the Investment Advisory Committee. I think it would be very difficult to get the technical skills and abilities that we have. In fact, I spoke to the chairman at the last meeting about this. The people that have been appointed by this committee have a career in finance and understanding the budget process, the funding, the investment process. There's very few people in San Clemente that has those expertise, and it would be very difficult to get that expertise, especially for free. And so I would, at least for Investment Advisory, I think, you know, the people that have been there are well-vetted, well-skilled, and I would hate to see us put term limits on them. That's, that's one area. The same is probably true for the Planning Commission, I think. Oh, yes?
Sorry to interrupt, but we have bifurcated.
Oh, we bifurcated that one. Okay. Strike that.
The next discussion.
Strike that.
Thank you, Madam City Attorney.
Anyhow, I do have concerns. I think one of the things that we were trying to, or we were trying to address, I'm not sure what we were trying to address, except I think if we have term limits, in the extent if we don't want to appoint somebody to serve on a committee, we just don't vote them on. And I think that serves as a term limit, in my view. So I, I don't think I can find any circumstances where I would support a term limit on commissions or committees.
Thank you, Mr. Cabral. Any others like to weigh in on this? Mr. Wu?
I share with, I share with Councilmember Cabral's concern. In general, I don't think it's needed. When I look at the last paragraph, the proposed ordinance, for example, the Investment Advisory Committee, there is a carve-out. The last sentence said, says, "The city council may exercise its discretion to waive any of the foregoing limitations if there is a lack of applicants or for other courts." So for some technical experts, if we, we cannot find good candidates and we need to keep them on, we simply give them a waiver. In general, I think I can support a term limit, but I, the term limit for me would be no more restrictive than the term limit to council members. In other words, four terms and, four terms, and there's no lifetime limit, and that's the amount of limit I would like to, I'm willing to support. Back in 2020, the voters approved the council term limit with a 78% of votes. So I think I can listen to the people to extend that to commission, commission and committee members. But as I said, it needs to be more leaning to than what's proposed here.
Thank you. Mr. Enmire?
Sure.
Actually, I apologize. Let's hear from Rick, and then I'll let the mayor pro temp speak.
Sure. Yeah, looking at this, and I was one that kind of supported Mark and, you know, a turnover of some, of some form. Looking at the staff recommendation, and I appreciate the staff recommendation, it makes sense. It's going to be very, very difficult, I think, to kind of figure that out, where you have to take some time off or go to a different committee. The only thing, again, bifurcating the Planning Commission, a simple, a simple, and it's kind of similar to what Mr. Wu was saying, if you just made it eight years total of serving on, no matter what committee it is, eight years total with an asterisk that if nobody applied for it, then we could give a waiver to extend the time on that. If it was as simple as that, I could probably support that. I would suggest that if we do, we, we start that in next year, in 2026, you know, so we go through the committees and commissions and, and put people on them with the understanding that there's going to be an eight-year, eight-year limit.
Thank you. Mr. Enmire?
Yeah, I appreciate all those comments, and I appreciate the discussion we're having, and I can fully support those modifications there. My whole point in this was just to say that there are a lot of people in this community who have lots of areas of expertise, and I'd love to hear more voices on these committees and have more people have the chance to be on these committees. So there are wonderful people already on our committees and commissions. I think they're doing fantastic, wonderful job. I just also would love to have more voices out there and get fresh ideas. So I'm happy to entertain.
Well, we need to hear from the public.
Yeah, here, but I, at this point, I'll say I'm appreciative of the modifications, and, yeah, we'll go from there.
Okay, do we have public comments, Madam Clerk?
We do. Karen Prescott Loeffler, followed by Lois McNichol, followed by Scott McCann, followed by Amanda Quintanilla.
And could I ask that we, again, [inaudible 00:08:29]. And could I ask that we, again, bifurcate it? If you're going to speak on the Planning Commission portion, could we?
This is, this is discussion not for the Planning Commission.
I know, but I think some of the speakers might even be from the Planning Commission.
Okay. Well, this, the, the time to speak now is regarding commissions and committees with the exception of the Planning Commission. So even planning commissioners are authorized to speak as long as they address the topic before the council, which is all the committees and commissions with the exception of the Planning Commission. So let's hear from...
But they will have their time to speak when...
They'll have their time to speak when we're specifically addressing...
Perfect.
...the Planning Commission and when you have properly recused yourself.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Karen Prescott Lefler. Is Karen here?
Is Ms. Lefler here?
I am.
Oh, come right ahead. It's your opportunity to speak.
I want to, concerning my question. Okay. So, so just regarding, went through the rules here, so I'm assuming that I wait? Yes. Okay. Then we'll go back.
Okay. Thank you. Next speaker.
Lois McNichol.
I am all for term limits. I'm sorry. But you cannot tell me that there aren't new people that have come into the city of San Clemente that can do this job on a committee or a commission just as well as the people that are already there, maybe even better, because they won't be coming in with, "I know everything there is to know" attitude. They'll be coming in with, "Let me see. I got to learn this job, but I can do it. I know I can, and I can provide a fresh perspective." And as far as the Investment Advisory Committee goes, I heard some of their ideas, and they weren't all that great. So I'm not sure why we need to keep those people on there for that reason. So therefore, yes, please, put term limits.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Scott McCann. Scott?
Now, Mr. McCann, you're on the Planning Commission, so you know this, this portion of our meeting is not related to the Planning Commission. You understand that?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor and City Councilmen. Thank you first for your service to the city. I know it's a significant amount of time and effort. Regarding, we've kind of switched up my thoughts a little bit, but honestly, my thoughts apply to all commissions, which is that people, there are people with specialized experience, just like Councilman Cabral said, particularly related to the Investment Advisory Committee. And I hope that you've got great people on each and every commission, and that every time there's a, their two-year term is up, that they reapply. You select the best people available for those committees. I would be terrible on the Investment Advisory Committee. But I would hate to see someone that's really well-qualified get term-limited out because there's some ordinance buried in the city codes that kicks them out. So in my mind, you have the power to reappoint people or appoint people and make your selections each and every time. If something's not working, you can even come in and make a change midterm. So council, commission members and committee members serve at the pleasure of the council. It's not like, there's no ulterior motive. So I really think that this is not a good idea. I can understand the knee-jerk reaction to, to want to do it, but, you know, I'm aware of, of really well-skilled people with specialized experience, that it would be a shame to lose them because there's a code somewhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Susan Ambrose.
It's on Planning Commission, so...
No, no, this is not the Planning Commission discussion.
Hold on.
Okay. Thank you.
And Susan Ambrose.
Good evening, city council members. Mayor?
Good evening.
Susan Ambrose here. I am an alumnus of the Coastal Advisory Committee. And I have to say that I went into this Coastal Advisory Committee thinking that I might want to go to beaches, parks, and recreation instead, but I was convinced to go back to Coastal Advisory Committee because that was really my background, my history, et cetera. And I think what I've learned in the many years that I've served, not only a couple of years or opportunities with BPNR, mostly with Coastal Advisory, that when you come into a, a job, let's just call this a voluntary job, it would be helpful if, if the committee, I mean, if the city council would actually give information to each person, or even if they're, if you're gathering them together, here's what you need to know to be a person on a, that we would consider for a Coastal Advisory Committee member. And coming from you, you can tell these people what they need to know and what they need to practice. Maybe they need a, a, a subcommittee, not a subcommittee, well, that would be actually one thing that they could do, but also a sub, a junior college class, maybe something like that, something that could be fit into a leadership program as well. I think Coastal Advisory is not the only one that I'm referring to, but almost every single committee, because a lot of people come in thinking, "I can do that. It's the water. It's the ocean. It's the sand. Next." And so if you, if you can aid people who can come and share their expertise with others that want to be part of this, I think that would be a bonus for everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Susan. Next speaker.
We do not have any other speakers.
Okay, gentlemen, no other speakers. I will entertain a motion. Before I do, I'll just, I want to share my thoughts. I, I agree with what's been said earlier about the need to get new, fresh blood, but this council has the ability to do that at any time. The advisory committees are appointed so that we can absorb the expertise and the knowledge of our community for our benefit. We're free to select that at any time. We're selected for a four-year term. Our appointed members can come and go at, at the will of this council, and we have the ability to select and to keep the expertise that we like and replace folks as the need arises. So I'm not sure this is a pressing need, so I don't know that I'm supportive of it. So those are my thoughts, and if anyone wants to make a motion, I'll...
Just for clarification, and I think I, we've got maybe possibly a hybrid of what you're saying. The eight-year term limit just means that's all they can do. We don't have to reappoint them, you know, after two years or whenever they come up for reappointment, so we still have that option. What I'm suggesting is an eight-year term limit starting in 2026. And with this term, let's say you have seven years right now on a committee, and you apply in 2025 and you get a two-year appointment, you will end up doing nine years, but then you're over the eight-year limit. In other words, you're not cutting anybody off at, at, at this particular point.
So if we were to adopt a policy like this, at the end of eight years, we could amend the policy again to extend it if we, someone was scheduled to go off, but we liked their expertise, so...
We, we, we could have that option, absolutely, for special expertise. And also, there's still the opportunity, and I think Susan kind of hit on it, let's say you've done your eight, eight years, you can still work with any committee in the city as an ad hoc member and still work on the programs. And I, I know people don't take advantage of that enough. We have so many people that want, want to participate. That does not preclude that. So I think it gives everybody an opportunity to work longer than eight years if, if they want to. It gives us the opportunity to appoint or reappoint. It just says that there's a limit. After eight years, then, then you, you, you step down, if we have other people that are qualified to, to step into that position. And we do, we'll have the option, in specialty cases, if somebody's developed some kind of real special expertise on that committee, we could, we could, we could continue it if, you know, give a waiver.
Okay. We've all weighed in. Do we have a motion on the floor?
I also added some clarification. What I intended to say, eight years without a lifetime limit is, after eight years, they can take a hiatus of two years and come back to continue to serve. So it's really a very, very light restriction, and I think it's a good compromise between the two positions.
Two-year hiatus?
Yes.
So then you could serve another eight years, and then, of course, that's a...
I mean, we, we don't want to tie the hands of a future councils. We don't really want to.
Okay. We're, we're all kind of stating our opinions. Do we have a motion on the floor on this item? Hybrid or otherwise?
Yeah, I'll, I'll make the motion, do my best to follow in, in Rick's recommendation here of adopting or doing the, introduce and conducting the first reading of the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, if I could just make a recommendation that you direct staff to bring back a different ordinance, the number of changes that it sounds like you might propose would be a little bit hard to do on the fly.
Thank you.
Thank you. I will make the motion then to staff to come back with a ordinance that reflects the modifications of creating an eight, or four-term, what would we call it?
Eight years total.
Eight years.
Different, a different committee during that time.
Yeah. Of, of an eight-year term limit. And I, I don't have a preference on either the, the two-year hiatus or, or not, so I, I'm...
Maybe they could just bring that back in the staff report, and we could kind of...
So what your motion is?
For...
For the staff to come back with an ordinance, modifying it how?
Modifying it to have an eight-year term limit instead of a four-year term limit.
I'll second that.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem, just one point of clarification. Did you want that effective 2026 or 2025 when we interview?
We can do 2026. We can do 2025.
Because we might get somebody that's caught in between the time. In that way, we can still give a two-year for the appointees.
Okay. And that was, that was the second by Councilmember Cabral? Is that what I heard?
We have a motion on the floor with a second. Any other, is there any discussion on the motion? Any substitute motions? Let's vote on the motion before us. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Passes 5-0. I think we've already passed, voted verbally. Passes 5-0.
And at this time, since you're going to discuss the Planning Commission, I'm going to recuse myself. But just, I, I want to let you know, when my wife comes up to speak, I usually stay in the room. This isn't, this isn't a habit of mine, so I want that clarification.
Thank you, Councilmember Cabral. Okay, the next discussion's on the same ordinance, dealing specifically with the Planning Commission only, and I think we've all kind of expressed our opinions. Do those opinions vary based on the fact that it's a Planning Commission? If not, let's hear from the public, then.
Karen Prescott Lefler, followed by Amanda Quintanilla.
Welcome, Commissioner.
If I speak really loud, can you hear me? Can he hear me?
No, he can't hear you. Well, actually, he might be able to, but I don't know that that matters. He's off the, he won't be deciding or voting, so...
Well, anyway, good evening, gentlemen, and thank you for your willingness to serve our community. And my name is Karen Prescott Lefler. And full disclosure, I am happily married to Councilmember Rick Lefler. But for the record, we don't always agree. Just letting you know that. I am honored to serve as your Planning Commissioner for several years now, and I wish to share my concerns, however, about the mention of term limits and about the potential drawbacks regarding the implementation of the limits. Though I understand that limits may provide fresh ideas and a different approach, we are charged in the Planning Commission with compliance, regulations, policy, the general plan, building codes, safety, land use, SEQA, conditional use permits, zoning setbacks, height limits, ADUs, the challenge of parking, and our historical gems, Ollie Hansen's, that fall under the Mills Act. The vast experience level of my colleagues is unsurpassed compared to other cities, because I know I work with other planning commissions. This council and previous councils have relied on the institutional knowledge of this commission. When we move a project to council, you can have the confidence that we have done our due diligence in the decision-making process. However, frequent turnover on commissions will disrupt this process and place undue stress on our city staff, who must accommodate a new learning curve, whether that's two years, eight years, there will be a learning curve. This will delay projects and certainly will cause a juggernaut. The current appointment process set forth by the council provides the opportunity to make changes based on facts rather than arbitrary removal. The process is working. Planning Commission is a valuable asset when it has the wisdom that we do, and the city should not change that. Since the appointment process works well, I can't imagine why we would want to fix something that isn't broken. And finally, gentlemen, I thank you for your time this evening. Additionally, I would like to recognize the professionalism of our city staff and their expertise that they bring to the table during our Planning Commission hearings. They are stellar. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Amanda Quintanilla, followed by Mike Kay.
I've, I've spoken about this several times, and about having skilled and experienced members on commissions and committees during the interviews and appointment for a couple of years now. And it's really imperative that we do have people that are skilled and knowledgeable to give that expertise to our city council members. It's of valuable importance. During the summer, I ran into a architect who's on the Planning Commission, obviously, and I had mentioned term limits because this matter came up during the summer, or the concept of. And he said that he wasn't worried because the, every, you know, year you have interviews and appointments for commissions and committee members. So I don't understand why this is here, why we're including that for all commissions and committees, with the exception of Planning Commission or maybe Investment Committee. And I agree with Councilmember Cabral, stating that the interview, the Investment Committee, they're really highly experienced with the investment process, and as another planning, as a planning commissioner just stated, that these are people with a lot of expertise, that they do their due diligence, that they have a various wealth of knowledge with the Mills Act, with the general plan amendments, with policies, procedures, the law. And I think that we should not have commissions, I mean, we should not have restrictions, term limits on Planning Commission and the Investment Committee. One of the concerns that I had in the staff report, that it says that, that according to Government Code 34900, that the elective office for a mayor is not a public position. But I, I've looked at the definitions, and maybe I, I wrote, read wrong, it says elective office is a public position filled through a general election or specific ballot vote. So it does pertain to, it gives the example of a position of a mayor, so I don't know if that's a typo in that staff report, but I think that that would hold true, that it would be, that Government Code Section 40605 would be applicable, as well as Government Code 34900. But thank you for your time, and I just think that there shouldn't be any commissions and committee term limits. And as far as subcommittees, I think that we still have, need experienced people. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Gentlemen, I just want to echo what others have said, and I want to give a perspective on this. When, when we're going through normal times, as we are kind of right now in our town, new committee members are fine. We have a system in place. It's fairly routine. But when we have a crisis, when we have a fire, when we have an earthquake, when we have a nuclear disaster nearby, when we have the Olympics coming up, imagine if our hands were tied. We need a Planning Commission. We have hotels coming on. We have a lot of infrastructure potentially put in place for the Olympics. Imagine if we had tied our hands before, and we were losing a couple of key people right now that would be gone next year or something, and, and we're scrambling to find the expertise. It's the same if we had a financial crisis now, and other crises. We have all had these crises. My own house, as you know, burned down in a giant fire. We had a new hire who was in charge of sort of sounding the alarm. That person was out of town, and we had no general alarm that night, which contributed to mass casualty event. So during normal times, yeah, we can have a turnover, we can get some fresh faces in there and, and everything. But it's when, when it hits the fan, when things get bad, we really need expertise in place, and I just fear that we'll be tying our hands in a... And I just fear that we'll be tying our hands in a future event. And it's really in those emergency events that we really need the expertise in place. And when we fail to have that, we're really failing ourselves as a community. So I'd wish that you guys would consider that, try to think of those terms. What if Palisades or the folks over the Eaton Fire right now were scrambling with people that were put in place that didn't have the expertise because of a term limit? They'd really be struggling. And so I just wish we'd kind of have a little bit of that thought as well. You guys have the ability to hire or fire folks who are being difficult or don't have the time or whatever. And I think that's enough of checks and balances in place. And keeping those experts that are there, especially when things get tough, is a really good idea. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Gentlemen, what's your pleasure? You want to start, Victor?
Yeah, I'll start. Turn this on. I don't think it's, for purposes of planning commission, it's a good idea to have term limits. And I will tell you why. Because it, much like the other committee I mentioned, the investment committee, it requires a lot of expertise. It would be, the best example I could give is if we had a department head for our planning and we said, you can only work for eight years. We actually want someone to work a career and have that expertise and have the experience. We don't want to term limit them, term limit our employees for eight years, or term limit a city manager. We want that expertise. And I think with the planning commission particularly, that they, it takes several years to develop the expertise and the know-how and the working relationships to be good at that job. And it really is a job. And so I just think that for purposes of the planning commission, we should keep people as long as we can and develop that expertise so that they can make the right decisions. And if we ever, you know, for whatever reason, don't think someone is up to the task, we just don't reappoint them.
Madam Clerk, was that the speaker for this item?
No.
Okay. Mr. Wood, would you like to weigh in on this issue?
Fairly, though. I think we, yeah, well, for the purpose of consistency, I think we just should do the same thing for planning commission as other commission and committees. That's all I'm thinking.
Mr. Enmeyer?
I hear what you're saying, Mr. Cabral. There's a lot of expertise on this particular commission. I want to be opposed even to extending the term limit to, say, 10 years. I do think that there are a lot of experts in this city. I think that there are a lot of architects, there are a lot of well, like, well-knowledgeable people and a pool of knowledge that we have here to pull from. And I believe that there are ample opportunities for people to become experts in this and for more people in the city to become aware of how the planning commission works. Now, I'm not going to be hurt if we don't have term limits for this particular commission, because I understand the other point of view as well, that in this particular one, having that continuity can definitely be beneficial. So for the purpose of continuity, I'll continue with that. But I'm, this is not a hill I'm willing to die on either, so.
Well, I'll entertain a motion now. I'll just make a very brief comment, that the planning commission's different in that this is one of our committees that actually has legislative authority in the, in our city ordinances. But it's also one that, again, we can rotate out as this council chooses on behalf of the city every two years. So I'm not sure that it's really needed, so those are my thoughts. So I'll entertain a motion if there is one.
I'll leave to table that, I guess, would be.
I'll second the motion. Is there a substitute motion? Okay, we have a motion, is there a substitute motion? I hear you hesitating.
No, I'm doing numbers in my head right now. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table the matter. I second it. Unless there's a substitute motion, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes, you were yes on that? Passes 4-0. Thank you very much. You can call Councilman Lefler back in the room. If you can hear us, Rick, come on back. If not, Brian, if you could fetch him, I'd appreciate it.
I'll go.
Okay.
I'll get him.
Thank you. Thank you, Brian. You're okay. You're okay. Victor's doing his duty. He's doing his duty. Thank you. I guess you wonder why I called you all here. Okay, the next item is item 9B. It's a consideration of resolution authorizing and providing for the issuance of a 2025 special tax refunding bonds for the Community Facility District 2006-1 Marblehead Coastal of the City of San Clemente for interest rates to allow for a 3% or greater net present value savings and approving the form of a bond indenture, escrow agreement, bond purchase agreement, preliminary official statement, and continuing disclosure agreement and authorizing other actions as connected therewith. Brian, do you have a staff report for us?
I do. I have a brief presentation if you'd like.
Very good, go right ahead.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. I'll be quick. This action is essentially a refinancing. It's a refunding of some bonds that were issued about 10 years ago and have come to their maturity date and, or they're callable, I should say. And there's an opportunity to issue new debt, given favorable market conditions, and pay off the old debt. And this will save some of our taxpayers, folks that own property within the CFD, which is in the Sea Summit neighborhood over in the Marblehead Coastal area. It'll save some money on their special property taxes. Market conditions have been somewhat irregular over the last couple of months, but we have, we first brought this to the council for consideration a month ago to begin moving forward. It looked like the taxpayers would achieve a net present value savings of about 6%. That in turn dipped on April 24th. The estimate was 3.04%, which is almost right on the edge of whether or not we would do it per our policy and per GFOA recommendations. Today, we've actually seen some improvement. Our municipal advisor is actually here this evening, and he's informed me that now we're looking at something above a 4% improvement based on rates today. Things will likely change over the coming weeks, but this is just preliminary. And if we cannot achieve a minimum of a 3% savings for the taxpayers, the deal will not be executed. This is some numbers here that, estimated annual savings for each property owner on average, with the rates as of a week ago, were a little over $1,300. With today's numbers, it's a little bit higher than that, more like $1,500. So the term of the debt also, it's noteworthy that that will not be extended. The term remains the same until 2046. Tonight's actions are to adopt a resolution to authorize the issuance. Again, this is only if we can achieve that guaranteed 3% net present value savings and also approving some documents that will be used for the transaction. Some next steps, in May, they hope to price and sell the bonds, assuming approval tonight. And then the bonds will close. And then in August, new special taxes will be calculated and sent to the county for the updated tax roll. And then in September, the old bonds are refunded and paid back with the proceeds of the new issue. As I mentioned, we do have Jim Fabian here this evening from Field and Roll App, if you have any additional questions for him, and also Nick Yeager from Straddling Law Firm.
Okay, a couple of quick questions. Just, if we don't do this this evening, this cycle, the next time is 10 years, did you say?
No, if we do it this time around.
If we don't do it this time around.
Then there'd be another 10-year cycle before those new bonds were callable.
The question is, are they callable, are they callable prior to the expiration, the 10-year expiration?
They are not.
They're not.
I'll ask Jim to come up.
That's a yes or no question. If it's a, if it's a, if it's a no, that's.
Thanks, Brian. Again, Jim Fabian, Fieldman Roll App and Associates. The current bonds are callable now in 10 years on 9/1/2025. If we couldn't do it, if we couldn't hit the 3% savings, we still have the opportunity to try again when interest rates improve.
Between now and the 10 years?
Well, the 10-year goes away, so we're going to go past the 10-year date.
So we have to, we're locked in for 10 years, is what I'm asking?
These bonds are locked in for 10 years.
Okay. My second question is, does the savings that you've predicted, does that include the attorney fees, the bond issuance fees, and all the fees that are related to the issuing of these bonds?
Yes, it does. All related costs are rolled into that.
Okay. I don't have any other questions, gentlemen?
Yeah, I've been fully.
Do you still own property in Marblehead, Victor? Are you conflicted on this, or are you okay?
This is a different part of Marblehead.
Different part of Marblehead, okay.
I've got a quick question. So basically, if you pull the trigger and this goes through, the reduction will be a reduction in the mellow roost tax that the residents pay.
That's correct. So a homeowner in Marblehead or Sea Summit, they have their ad valorem property taxes. This is in addition to that. And so if we're successful in moving forward, locking in the savings above 3%, their tax bill for that Marblehead or Sea Summit CFD charge will go down. And as we looked at on the slide, it was about, it's about $1,400 reduction per year for the remaining term of the bonds.
Okay, and the other question is, do we look at all the opportunities for bond refunding? Are there any other parts of the city that we're doing the same thing for, that we would possibly refund?
We have two other CFDs where we have actually refunded in the not-too-distant past.
I think we did Talega not too long ago.
Well, it's Forster Ranch. We did that one a couple of years ago. And then the commercial reassessment district, I think, Plaza Pacifica. Those are the two other land-secure districts that the city is in charge of. Talega is not, you know, you don't do those bonds. I think it's the Santa Margarita Water District that does those.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No.
A really quick question. I think it's already being answered. I just want to make it more clear. The fees and all the cost, the 3% of minimum saving is after these fees and the costs.
That is correct.
Okay. What is the current total amount of an average household on their mellow roost fees per year?
The current amount? I don't know if I have that handy with me, but we're, what we're doing is saving about $1,400. So every home within the Sea Summit CFD has a charge based upon the square footage of that home. And that CFD, when it was created back in 2015, the city council at that time adopted a random method of apportionment that governs the dollar amount per home based upon the square footage. And it ranges, I think the smallest home's about 2,200 square feet, the largest home's about 3,600 square foot. So every homeowner in the Marblehead CFD pays a special tax. The average reduction is about $1,400. And I'm sorry, I don't know off the top of my head what those dollar amounts are.
And before we pay off the existing bond, we're going to issue the new bond. So in between these two days, there will be two bonds at the same time.
Well, can I answer that? So technically, when we close the bond issue, as Brian indicated, on June 12th, those bonds are defeased, the old bonds. So they're no longer, even though they're not callable until September 1st, you're creating an escrow account or fund. That's a lockbox that puts aside money to pay those bonds off on September 1st. They're technically defeased on that June, as of June 12th. And so you only have the new bonds outstanding after the bonds are closed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
One last question that I have. We've gone from about 3% to now 4%. If we pull the trigger this evening, what's the chances that the interest rate would go higher, the savings percent, I mean, would go higher in the timeframe between tonight and the time that you actually acquire the bonds?
Well, I wish I knew the answer to that question.
Any guesses?
I mean, it has been, you know, since April 2nd, it's been a wild ride.
It could go down, too.
It could, yeah.
But in any event, it looks like we're looking at least 3% savings.
Yeah, when we first started working with Brian, we were above 6% NPV savings. And so, you know, we saw significant ramp up since we were here on April 1st. I think when we first got authorization, we saw that ramp up. We're seeing a ramp back down. We're seeing stability. We're seeing deals get done. We're seeing the municipal marketplace act rationally and efficiently. And so we're confident that, you know, we're going to be, you know, in that 4% to 4.5% range and be able to lock in the savings for the property owners.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
We do not.
Okay, gentlemen, do you, anyone care to make a motion?
I would just remind the public that we've all spent an enormous amount of time on these, being briefed on this individually. So it's not, you know, we ask a few questions to clarify things, but I think each of us has spent a significant amount of time, even before this meeting, over all this stuff with staff. I know I did with Brian. So I don't have any further questions, but I'll move the item.
If you're ready, go ahead.
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passes 5-0. Thank you, gentlemen. Next item is item 9C, discussion of possible direction of the offshore sand source investigation project. This was agendized by Mr. Cabral and Mr. Lefler and Mr. Enmeyer. So who'd like to kick off the discussion?
I'll start it off. I think one of the concerns I had is where, and based on questions that I had last meeting, I'd like to see us look at historical data, previous studies, science that has previously identified the highest probability locations and exclude the lowest probability areas that are maybe close to San Clemente but are of low probability when we do our sand search. We have one opportunity to find the sand. We want it to be close to San Clemente. And I know that OCTA is also interested in identifying the site with 100% confidence, which means they need that 240,000 cubic yards immediately. I mean, within the next few months, which means and suggests that we should identify potential sites based on our science and data that we have the highest probability of achieving based on the expertise of our consultants, who we pay thousands of dollars to identify those sites. And that's my thoughts on it.
Anyone else want to discuss the item?
I do. So I reviewed the presentation from our last meeting from the consultant. And one thought is, in Oceanside, there are two major rivers, Santa Margarita River and the San Luis Rey River. The presentation's that the sand is from .2 millimeters to cobble. And .2 just meet, just match the sand size of our beach, and the cobble was what we got last time. That area is pretty large, and there had been substantial amount of vibrant call down by Army Corps of Engineers and other consultants in the past. So I think if we look around that area, we should be able to find a, let's say, 15-acre spot. If we look at the checkerboard diagram, each cell is about 10 acres. In order to get 250,000 cubic yards, all we need is one and a half boxes. So within that large area, we should be able to, I hope that we can find a smaller area, 10, 20, 30 acres area, that there's no cobble on top of the sand. So with the additional money from the OCTA, that's what I like, encourage our consultant to look into. That's closer to the current, the Surfside Sunset, the Surfside Sunset location. And it was the original location. If we can find out a way to get the sand from that location, we still. we still save some money, although it's not, it's not as near as we want it to be.
I have a question. Do we have any public speakers in this item?
We have one.
One? I see our sands are at the podium. You kind of understand the issue. Last week, we had a presentation. Our experts said, we think there's probably a low probability of finding sand close in. And then the suggestion was, do we abandon that effort and go farther out? Did you want to have any comments on your observation before we hear from our public speaker or from our member of the public and then go forward?
Thank you for the opportunity. Good evening, Mayor and Council members. We have prepared a revised exploration plan to address some of the comments and concerns raised at the last city council meeting. In addition, as you mentioned, we do have a commitment from OCTA to contribute financially to this study. So that also has the potential to modify our approach and our exploration sites. I'm going to turn it over to Greg Huron from Coastal Frontiers, who is here tonight to talk about the details of the plan. And I'll be available for questions after, and Greg will, too. So we're here to satisfy the city's concerns with regard to the approach for this exploration plan.
Yes, come right ahead. Welcome. Well, thank you for having me back. So I understand we're here to talk about potential changes and how we go about this exploration plan. Can we advance once? So just to set the stage, in about two minutes, a quick summary of those candidate borrow sites, the currently proposed seven-day exploration plan that we talked about last time, and an alternative seven-day exploration plan, which I think addresses some of the concerns that were brought forward. And then we can talk about it in whatever level you want. I've got all the detailed stuff behind this, so we can go through it. So again, we have these 11 candidate borrow sites from Surfside Sunset to Santa Margarita River. Again, that playing field is kind of set by where sand has been used for San Clemente in the recent past. And we're ranking those based on existing data, from high probability of finding sand to very low. Some sites, we have more information than others. And some sites, we have more confidence than others on that ranking. Next slide, please. So based on the direction that we got from the city to make sure we turn over every stone on these sites that are very close to the city, we recommended an exploration plan where we're kind of do a screening-level search at these close-in sites, because we don't think there's a high probability of finding sand. We don't want to spend multiple days on a site just to confirm that they don't have good sand. And after that first four-day period, we will have looked at six sites in a screening level. And then at that point, you hit this decision matrix, and you start, you know, if you have one good site, two good sites, whatnot, you're focusing in more on those. But the fact of the matter is, you do spend the first four days of your seven-day program on sites that are lower probability. So the next slide. So based on what we've heard at the last meeting, the potential, what might we do somewhat differently? And we got together as a team and came up with a slightly different plan, effectively eliminating the Dohany North Beach and San Clemente South sites, which were among the lower-probability sites. I still think Dana Point is intriguing enough to look at. There's some risk involved there. And part of the reason it's intriguing to look at is there's not as much information as everywhere else. So you just don't really know as much. But there's some risk there. We really don't know if there's a lot of hard bottom on the sea bottom, because there's no surveys for that. You know, we have anecdotal information from lobster fishermen that they do fish out there. So there's some risk that even if we do find good sand there, we might not be able to dredge it. So then we, so we spend, we'll spend one day there, is the proposal. And then we'll move to the San Mateo site, which I think we had rated as a medium probability of sand, and spend one day there. So we can get about five cores a day. So I've moved away from that, almost that two-to-three core screening, because these sites are getting so far apart, we just can't get to multiple sites in one day. They're about seven or eight miles apart. And then now you get into this field evaluation, and you start making some decisions. And this gets complicated, so I've kind of highlighted in color what they are. But the takeaway is, is that you're going to get more time on these sites like San Mateo, San Onofre, Camp Pendleton, Las Polgus, and potentially something up in the North Orange County area to spend more time and develop out that, the number of vibrocores to get a large enough site to be worth dredging. I still think you want about 10 cores in these sites, about 100 acres. You know, there's some discussion, well, maybe we only need 10 acres or 20 acres. But the way these dredges work, they need some space to kind of mow the lawn, these hopper dredges, like a cutterhead dredge, like they use at Surfside Sunset, can sit on a site more and kind of dig a deep hole. But these hopper dredges like to sweep the seafloor in a, like a lawnmower. So effectively, the recommendation here, or potential recommendation, is eliminate three of those low-probability sites in nearest San Clemente, which are Dohany North Beach and San Clemente South.
Can you go back to the last slide? So the Dana, no, the one where the probab, there you go. So the Dana, you're recommending Dana Point, which is also low probability, and San Mateo, which is medium probability. What's the difference between the Dana Point low probability and the North Beach low probability?
I have more information at North Beach. I have less information at Dana Point. There's a handful of vibrocores. They're much further away from the site than they are at North Beach. I mean, we can go down, let's go down and look at the site right now. Let's go down probably 10 slides. One more. Keep going. We need to get down past Orange County. There we go. So Dana Point here, the Corps of Engineers' detailed geophysical survey doesn't go that far. It stops pretty close to that affluent outfall where the red line is. And then I've got a handful of cores from the Osborne studies in the 80s. And they're, one of them's marginally fine, one of them's unsuitedly fine, and one of them has no reported information. So that's all I have there. So I have some questions about what's on the sea bottom, if there is some reef there. I'm not positive. And now if we go down two sites, to North Beach, I have more information there. I see that I have a sediment thickness. I see I have no reef in the immediate vicinity. And I've got three cores around it, all which, one says marginally fine, one's unsuitedly fine. But they're much closer to the site. So it's, it's as much about the mystery of Dana Point as it is what I know about North Beach.
The dark line that intersects that triangular pink area, is that the 70-foot depth area? Or what is that, the depth of closure? What line is that?
So the black hatched line is our target depth area. That's 35 feet on the landward side and 60 feet on the offshore side.
And that bisects that section where you're anticipating sand?
Yeah, because the cyan color is where my sediment thickness reaches 10 feet or greater. So it's so narrow in my target depth, I'm cheating a little bit further offshore.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any questions of the?
Yeah, could you go back to the map where there's high probability? I want to get a sense of, I think, one of the first two maps, maybe the second one there. The high probability sites that you've identified.
The details?
The details, yeah. So.
Right here, yeah.
If, we have limited funding, of course. If we were going to do all the high-probability sites, would we have the funding to do all the high-probability sites?
There's only one high probability, and then the next one is medium high. That's the high probability.
I'm trying to get a sense of if we did high, medium-high, and escalated down. How far down can we go with the resources we have?
She got seven days of vibrocoring, five days, or five cores a day, more or less, so 35 cores. There's 20 cores there at Surfside Sunset. There's 20 cores down at Huntington Beach. However, in our sampling and analysis plan, I'm requesting of the dredged material management team that we only need six cores to identify, or to categorize Surfside Sunset, because it's got such a long history of being used as a dredge site. Some of the other sites, they haven't been used as a dredge site, and they haven't been well-explored. So it's that one core per 10 acres, I think, is necessary to make sure that we know was at the site so that we understand if it can be dredged. And then it also satisfies the need of the dredged material management team that it's the right size and not chemically. And the perfect example is Santa Margarita River. That was sampled really well. So, hey, this sediment looks good, and it's chemically suitable. But there was so much layering in it with cobbles and gravels and whatnot that it proved to be undredgable. So I'm trying to catch both things here. And that's why at Surfside Sunset, I'm asking the DMNT, hey, let me just do six cores here to categorize this particular one.
So I'm actually looking for the map of your recommendation, your current recommendation.
Oh, the flow chart?
The flow chart, yeah. I think it's the second slide.
Yeah, so there can be so many perturbations that come out of this. But the thought is, let's spend a day at Dana Point. And I think there's, I think a lot of people have questions about Dana Point. And again, some of it's the mystery of what's there, right?
Is it high or low probability?
It's low.
The very lowest?
No, it's not very low. The ones that are very low is like, I've got cores, one right in it. That was so, so fine that the Corps of Engineers didn't send it to the lab.
Okay, okay. And was there silt in there? Is it?
Yeah. I mean, it came up on the deck, and I, well, I'm speculating that the reason they didn't send it to the lab is that it was obvious from looking at it on the deck that it wasn't going to be beach quality. That was at San Clemente South.
So looking at all these, how many of these, can we do them all, or are we limited by the number that we can do?
Well, it kind of depends. So if we start at day one at Dana Point, day two at San Mateo, and then we look at the results there, and then you decide, if both of those look good, then day three and four, you'd probably stay at San Mateo and get 10 more cores, which would fill out that hole, I think it's a 150-acre site. And then day five and seven, you'd go get, or five, six, and seven, you'd spend at Dana Point and get the rest of those 20 cores, and you have two sites. That's one possible outcome. The other is, okay, one of those sites between Dana Point and San Mateo looks good. Let's assume it's San Mateo. And you'd spend two days there, and you'd get the rest of those 15 cores of that 150-acre site. And then you'd move on down the coast on day five and spend a whole day there, get about five cores at San Onofre. And then at that point, you go, okay, does this look good? If it does, you stay on that site for the next two days and get another eight to 10 cores. Now you've got about 150 acres proved out. If it doesn't, you move down to Las Polgus. And I've said spend two days there, because I was running out of room on real estate on my slide. But you could spend one day there, and then, okay, well, let's head to Santa Margarita River or Santa Ana River.
If you were identifying the highest probability of finding sand, would it look like this, or how would it look?
I think it's going to be the top one, the one that's shaded yellow, or the one that says there's no promising sites. I don't think both, I don't think the two promising sites after field evaluation is going to happen. My gut tells me it's probably going to be, I'm hoping, I'm really hoping San Mateo is promising, so. But my gut's telling me it's going to be there, or the one where we just keep moving down the coast and potentially all the way up to Santa Ana River, which is the pink-shaded outcome. That's my gut feel.
All right. So you still, seems like you want to evaluate seaside at some point? Because we're just assuming there's tons of sand there, but I don't, on this chart, we don't make it all the way up to seaside, right?
No. You know, part is that I'm laying out what your options are, and so that we can have these discussions and make these decisions on how you want to spend your money. And we're going to do what you guys ask us to do. Now, Surfside Sunset, it's the furthest away. In my mind, the Corps of, if the Corps of Engineers continue in your project, they're going to go back there and find that sand for you. I don't know, I'm not sure why you guys need to go that far away. You don't have a project on the books right now, right? Your next project's the Corps of Engineers, and they've got to find that sand for you.
So this flow chart, if you're attacking it, this is the way you would suggest to do it?
I think that's the way to go into the field and do it. And the reality is, we're probably going to be surprised somewhere. And there's going to, could be more perturbations than this. But I think we can, we want to make those decisions on the fly and try to be as flexible as possible and get to as many sites, and hopefully fully characterize a site that we can walk away with and say, this is where you're going next time you have a project, whether it be the core project or a different project.
So we know there's lots of sand in San Clemente. If San Mateo proves to be a fair amount of sand, the fair amount of sand that we know is already there is providing a national surf sandbar area that has allowed us to get the Olympics because of the amount of sand that's there. What kind of impact, would any dredging or sand removal be in San Mateo, which is a national heritage surfing location? Is that, would that be problematic, number one? And number two, the second part would be, if you move farther south into Camp Pendleton, Las Polgus, would the marine operations of the aquatic seal and naval training areas, would that be an impediment to our search or our ability to collect sand there, in your opinion?
Let's start with San Mateo. I think that's certainly going, if we find sand there, I think permitting that as a dredge site, it's certainly going to come up, the fact that Trestles is right there. Offshore dredge, dredging for sand nourishment has been a very common practice in Southern California and elsewhere. So there's precedent for it. I think we're probably going to have to look at what changes in the wave field there might be and look at the dredge design to make sure it's probably a shallow cut and not a big, a deep cut that could affect wave refraction as it's going over it, or minimize that. But I think that's going to be a challenge that is likely to come up with the San Mateo site. At Camp Pendleton, Las Polgus, we've discussed with them already, the site that we've identified. It does not appear we're going to have any trouble exploring it, as long as that we're in communication and we're de-conflicting any operations. The next step is, if you find sand there, can you permit it to dredge? And I think they've expressed concerns about it. I think most of those can be addressed based on science and past precedent. But it's likely to be an issue that has to be dealt with.
Have you had any contact with the Orange County Transportation Authority regarding their desire to search for sand to meet their emergency permit obligations in Mariposa?
Yeah, I understand that they have a desire to help fund parts of this project.
And they'll be looking in what areas, farther out from San Clemente, not close in?
My understanding is they've expressed desire to look at the higher-probability sites.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Yeah, I guess I do. Let's go to the last page of the presentation. That's Santa Margarita. So for all these areas, we're looking at the area in front of Oceanside Harbor, the river mouth of Santa Margarita River. And then there's another San Luis Rey River down south in a very close proximity. For the existing site, at least the last time, at the beginning of the Army Corps of Engineers project, we know they are covered by the cobble, but that's only a small area. Do you feel that if we expand the area, or if we go a little farther away from that cobble area, we can find sand that's not covered by cobos?
Yeah, that's exactly why we've placed the orange box where it is. We're hoping that we can get a little further away from the areas that prove to have too much cobble and layering, layering of gravels. You can see by how many vibrocores have been done here in the past. People really want this to be a site.
Right.
And it's just hasn't necessarily panned out. We saw what happened with your project and the Corps of Engineers, the difficulties they had. Sandag also went into this site and dredged it for a little bit as part of Regional Beach Sand One, but abandoned it quickly, because the sand was much finer than they were hoping for.
Okay.
But they had other sites already permitted, so they just moved to a better.
And this is north of the potential site. And then to the south of it, there should be another area that you may be able to explore.
Yeah, so that's south of Oceanside Harbor. That area was actually recently explored by the City of Oceanside, and they found sand that they were happy with. It was fairly fine on the top, but coarser down, coarser further below. fine on the top, but coarser down, coarser further below. I think you may run into some pushback from taking sand from that part of the littoral cell, considering how much those beaches need sand as well. And it's right off of those beaches. I mean, that's going to be a political discussion, I would imagine.
Okay.
But that's why we haven't identified any sites down there.
Okay. For, for the sites covered by the cobble, if we have a cut section dredger, does that solve the problem?
No, because those are designed to basically dredge at the, sit onsite, dredge and pump directly to shore. And they've got about a three, three, three and a half mile range, which they can do that. That's what they use up at Surfside Sunset. But the hopper dredge is going to mow the lawn, effectively fill the hole, drive to your beach.
Okay. Nevertheless, the Santa Margarita River is not on your flow chart?
Yeah, I don't have enough days to get down there.
Okay.
I've, you know, designing this flow chart effectively still to try to respect the request to look as close to San Clemente as possible. I mean, we have to keep in mind that, you know, I can go to Surfside Sunset and Santa Margarita River, but I'm also going to spend a lot of time in transit. So I'm trying to go in a sequential manner where I'm not wasting a lot of time bouncing back and forth between places. But also, and we can add, if Santa Margarita River is what you guys want to explore, we can, we can do that.
Does additional funding from OCTA allows you to go beyond what's shown on your current revised flow chart?
Yes.
Okay.
But I have not been given direction on where the city wants to look, or OCTA, or how that process is going to play out.
Okay, thanks.
Andy, did you or Leslie have anything to add before we?
Mayor, I do just a little bit. A couple of sites that we haven't discussed, that we have discussed a little bit with OCTA, and there's, that's been thrown out a little bit, so I just wanted to maybe clarify that. OCTA has contacted us and made a commitment that they would contribute enough to have three additional days of searching. But they would like us to concentrate on some of the sites that they believe are of higher probability. And two of those sites, if we pull those up, one of those is the Santa Ana River and the other is Huntington Beach. And so it might be helpful to get your understanding of that. And again, you're trying to work in a sequential order. So how would, what would you suggest is the best way, considering the fact that we do, let's assume that we do have an agreement with OCTA and you're able to add additional days, up to three additional days of searching, does that change your pattern? Does it change your sequence? Just maybe you can, I know that's a lot to, to think about, but.
Well, I mean, three additional days, 15-ish cores, you know, five cores at one site, maybe 10 cores at the other site. So the five cores is probably not going to be enough to get a dredge, a site big enough that a hopper dredge is going to be able to efficiently excavate. The 10 cores, I think, would be. So, you know, we could start up north and work our way down. The vessel's coming down from Santa Barbara, so that makes sense. But I don't want to get in a situation where we spend too much time up north and don't get to some of these sites down, down below, because I know how important that is to the city, that something to be found close.
I got a, so if you, with the extra three days, could you start at the Santa Ana River and then work your way backwards through the, through the flow chart that you presented?
Yeah. I mean, I want to limit the number of days up there, just so we, we get to the sites close to you. Because I know, that's just been told to me multiple times that that is paramount importance. And I think, to be honest with you, when we first started with this, I thought we were going to be spending all of our time up here. And then because we were pushed so much by the city to say, turn over every stone by the city, we actually found more information than we expected to find, which is, so it was great that we were pushed on that. And unfortunately, a lot of it is very low probability.
Question?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Who in the city was pushing this? Because I don't think we ever spoke to this issue as a city council.
I for one.
Well, yeah, you can speak, you didn't speak for the city there. You spoke for yourself.
Well, the Coastal Commission grant was to find sand close to shore.
Yeah.
Close to our shore, not Huntington Beach's shore, SEAL Beach's shore.
No, my only point is that, you know, when you spoke, you spoke as a member of the council, not for the city, correct?
Well, I spoke in conjunction with our city manager and our city sandsar, who said, let's turn over rocks close to shore. If we're successful, even, even with a low probability, we made that recommendation before we got the historical analysis.
Yeah.
So the question is, where do we go now? I understand completely, the logic was, let's go where the higher probability is.
And I.
But in going forward, I think it's a mistake for us not to consider, even with low, Dana Point's low possibility are, you know, the pier areas are low probability. Low probability doesn't mean no probability. If we find sand, it would be a gold mine for this town, financially and beachwise. So, so I think it's important.
I agree with you. It would be a gold.
Let me finish, let me finish.
But I was in the middle of my statement when you interrupted.
When you asked me a question, and I'm answering your question.
Okay.
And the remainder of the answer is that, that by turning over every stone, we're doing our citizens a favor. And the Coastal Commission's paying for this.
Yeah.
And, and the larger areas, which you make a good point, let's go where we expect to find sand. The Orange County Transportation Authority has said, we're willing to do that. So I think we should, my opinion is, we should stay the course, take our chances, find out what's there so we will know forever. We'll know, we'll know once and for all. And to suggest that the historical data is conclusive, you know, 40 years of technology, as we all know, technology has changed dramatically in the last 40 or 50 years, dramatically. And we say, well, geologic time. Well, geologic time, 40 years ago, we had a beach, and we don't have a beach now. So that sand is somewhere. So there's nothing, in my opinion, there's nothing wrong with looking, but I certainly understand the logic.
I understand your position, yeah.
I understand the logic of going where there's higher probability.
No, no, and I, and I respect your opinion. I think, you know, you have, I'd like to find sand at the end of the pier, or, or at North Beach. What I'm trying to do, though, and I think this was a discussion I had last week, is that the policy is set by the city council, not by one member. So there has been no direction to you, as far as I understand from this city council. This is why I wanted to hear from all my colleagues to say, this is the direction that we're giving you. My, what I'd like to do, based on science, based on historical data, based on your expertise, where we have the highest probability of finding sand, as opposed to, there's a fisherman that said he saw sand at a certain area, or a clamor that said, I've been seeing sand there. That's what I'm trying to get at. I want to spend our resources based on the science and based on historical data. And I'm trying to find out what you, as a recommendation, are saying is our best chances of finding that, that sand. Because I really don't know. I don't think the mayor knows, nobody knows. But, but you have the expertise to tell us where our best chances of finding that most amount of sand closest to San Clemente is. And that's, I'm depending on you. I don't want you to listen to me and my gut as where I think it is. I want the science and the expertise to direct me.
Well, I think, well, that flow chart, I think that's what he was saying, to find the closest sand, that's the best strategy.
Well, no, I heard a different thing, though. I heard that.
Okay, let me, let me, let me finish.
Okay.
I asked the question, and I said, if you were going to do this and trying to find sand closest to San Clemente, is this the flow chart? He said yes.
Yeah.
I, I like the idea of the three extra days, the boat's coming from up north, let's look at the, at the Santa Ana River. It's at least a moderate chance of finding sand. You can coarse sample there and come down and work the flow chart backwards. And I think we've covered both bases. We've gone a little bit farther north, where there's a, at least a moderate probability. And we've come back, and then we've eliminated anything that's close to us. If we don't find sand anywhere, then we've got to circle back and make another strategy, which we can do.
I would only add, and I think, correct me if I'm wrong, that you also said it was based on your direction from the city to find sand. That flow chart was created based on the direction of this city to find sand close to San Clemente.
The original exploration plan was based on our understanding that the city wanted to make sure every site as close to the city was explored. And I apologize if that is a mix-up between what is council and what is staff. But that's, that's why we went with this very high screening level there. Now, I think this alternative plan here is what our team came up with as a way, again, to look at a place like Dana Point, which I think has, still has enough questions to be worth looking at, but then focus on a lot of these other sites and be able to spend more time on these other sites that have a higher probability of sand. I think Surfside Sunset's your best chance. And if you, if, if the, if the city wants to do that and kind of get that in your back pocket, that's not unreasonable. It's just a matter of whether or not the Corps would be doing that on your behalf anyway. I don't know the answer to that question. I get, I'm speculating.
Okay, I understand. I'm just, I mean, we're just trying to find the right solution.
This is a reasonable compromise here of staying close to the city, but increasing your chances at some of the higher probability sites. And I, you know, I never say never. I could be proven wrong if we go to North Beach and Dohany and say, I could be proven wrong. But from everything I know, the science and the previous samples, I just don't think we're going to find sand there. Not that's a.
Mr. Wu, did you have a question?
Yeah, just, just a comment.
Comment or question?
Comment.
Okay, let's, let's get the questions first. Do you have a question for our, our expert?
Yeah, just a quick, first, thank you. You are, you're doing some amazing work in trying to organize all these things and to take all of these opinions together to come up with this plan. We really do appreciate what you're, what you're doing for San Clemente. Question for you, you mentioned the, the Santa Ana area there, coming, and the boats coming down from Santa Barbara. Just logistically, starting up north, moving down south, would there be, would it be, if that were a possible way to go, how long would you want to spend in that Santa Ana area? And then would there be another site on the way down to Dana Point you would want to hit? Or would you go straight down to Dana Point if the direction from the council was to start up north and work your way down?
How many days to spend kind of depends on what you find, right? I mean, if you find great sand, I think you want to spend at least 10 cores, 100 acres. But it's still further away than, say, San Mateo is. So I don't, I would hate to not be able to get down there.
Would it be, in your opinion, would it be, because we do have these extra two to three days with OCTA. In your opinion, would it be a, a better strategy to hit those, to hit that Santa Ana area, skip Dana Point, go to San Mateo?
Santa Ana area, skip Dana. That's not unreasonable at all. Again, Dana Point, my interest in that is, is much the mystery of what I don't know about it than what I do know about San Clemente South.
Okay, thank you.
And there's nothing between Santa Ana River and Dana Point. You know, Laguna Beach, a lot of that's in a marine-protected area. There was, if you look in the report, we actually, there was some cores in there by the Corps of Engineers that we did in 1993. And it wasn't great to begin with, but it's in a marine-protected area. So I was like, we'll just step away from that.
The, if there are any more questions of the expert, let me just add my thoughts.
I think we have comments, so.
Yeah, we have public comments. How many comments do we have? Just one? Okay. Any other questions for our expert while, while he's here? Thank you very much for your time and your expertise, sir. Appreciate it.
And again, we'll execute the plan that you guys want us to execute.
Thank you. And again, before the speaker speaks, the goal was sand close to San Clemente. This wasn't an order to ignore the council. Part of the order was do the analysis, do the, do the historical data, identify some locations, and make a report, which is precisely what they did. At the result, because of that report, several of you suggested, let's take another look at this. So that's why we're here today. And it is a council, council decision.
Absolutely, yeah.
Decision.
But we're all trying to get to the right place.
Absolutely. Our public speaker, was that Lois?
Actually, Suzy White-Law, and then Lois just turned in a card. So we have two speakers.
Let's have the first public speaker.
Okay, most of my comments tonight were focused on the, the first plan, which had a lot of sampling, a lot of time right in front of San Clemente, which I think is, just was not going to be productive. There is no sand out there. Just to beat a dead horse, maybe, because I really like this new alternative plan. I think you 100% should go with this new alternative plan. I do kind of agree that you should go off of Dana Point. I think that there's potential there. And if you do Santa Ana River, I would say do it at the end. I think you really should try to get as close to San Clemente as possible. This Dana Point and San Mateo are probably the two highest ones, and then work your way down into the Camp Pendleton area. That makes total sense. And then if OCTA gives us money, go back up, on the way back up, do, do the Santa Ana. But really, it is important to try to get as close to San Clemente as possible, just not in the pretty much zero possibility, which is right in front of our coast. You hired your geologists, they're good geologists. Go with, go with what they tell you to do. I, you're all really smart. You've really pushed things in the right direction. But in the end, you should go with, with what your scientists are telling you to do and, and go with what their gut instinct. And you're all almost PhD marine sedimentologists. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Lois McNichol.
Okay, so I kept trying to figure out why there's no sand under the ocean. Now I understand. This is all about dredging. And it's only, that's because it's the only possible method that is being considered for sand replenishment. And sand replenishment, by the way, is like trying to fill a bucket with a hole in it. It's temporary, it's never-ending, and very expensive. There is a company that is willing to come down to San Clemente and provide a demonstration of their product on 50 feet of our beach to show us that we don't need to, we don't need dredging, we don't need to spend all this money, that we could get five miles of our beach done for $54 million, and that is all we would spend on it. It would be a one-and-done process. And we could take those modules that they use and rent them to neighboring beach cities for revenue, so that they could have nice beach, nice beaches also. So let's not get stuck on dredging, because that, there's only six or seven companies that do this. And they do it all over the world, and it's the most expensive method. And it doesn't last.
Thank you. Any other public speakers? Okay, well, gentlemen, it's decision point. We need to instruct our experts. Let me just make a comment. I understand the need to find the highest probability sand. I'm a little surprised to hear our experts say there's zero sand in San Clemente, no sand and zero sand. The probability of sand right off our shore in North Beach is the same as the experts have identified in Dana Point. So to say there's no sand, I'm kind of tired of hearing that. We, we don't know. We know there's a low probability based on the experts, but we don't know that there's no sand. The return would be very, very phenomenal if there was any. Since we're looking at a large area, my thinking is, it'd be nice to start north, Huntington Beach, work down through Dana Point into San Clemente and San Mateo. And again, if we find large volumes of sand, we can park there. This is a fluid study. This isn't a, this isn't a, we're locked in. We're looking for sand. This is like a prospector on the, on the shores of a Northern California beach trying to find gold. You look until you find the gold, then you park for a while. So I just think we need to, we need to make sure every stone's unturned. Again, this is a project that's being financed by the Coastal Commission. And the OCTA has stepped up to do additional studies for those areas farther out. I just don't think, I think we should give our town the opportunity to, to find sand. And if there is none, we'll know it forever, or at least for geologic time. So those are my thoughts, gentlemen. Want to start with Mr. Wu, and then we'll work down?
Sure.
Sure. Well, I think the, the condition of the, the grant from Coastal Commission is that we're looking for sand near the shoreline of San Clemente. So I think, I, I'm going to take the advice from the expert that I would say let's start with some, with the Dana Point Harbor area and the San Mateo, and then move, and then move outside. With the additional money from OCTA, I hope that we can cover the peripheral area north of the Santa Margarita River. I know that if we just look at the highest probability of finding sand, surfside sunset will be the one. But that's, that's not the purpose of this, this, this project. So that's all I have to say. Just accept the, the advice from the expert and see how we can maximize the benefit of the additional money from OCTA. Since OCTA is going to cover the Santa Ana River, the, the money we initially allocated, or the, or the time we initially allocated to the Santa Ana River or Huntington Beach can be moved to the Santa, Santa Margarita River, north of Oceanside, possibly.
Yeah, I, I, I don't care whether we start at, at Santa Ana River and work our way down to San Mateo, or start at San Mateo and work our way up to Santa Ana. Whatever the geologist thinks would be the better way to go. But I, I just think we go with this flow chart. We, we have the Santa Ana in there, and let's move on.
Victor, yeah, Victor?
All right, yeah.
I, I think it's on, yeah. I, I think one of the things that you correct me, at least the report suggested that the OCTA's money is going to be used for sites with 100% confidence to provide the 240,000 cubic yards. So it's not going to be in San Clemente or near San Clemente, as I understand it. And I think there's a reason for that, because we have one month, maybe a little bit more than a month to find the sand if we want to put it on our beaches within the window that they are currently offering, which means that we have to find the sand. And I, I, I would defer to the experts. I think we have to defer to their best judgment to find a potential borrow site that's based on historical data, based on previous studies, based on science, not based on speculation or hope. And that would be my preference. And that means probably eliminating the sites in San Clemente that are the very lowest probability or no probability. And those are my thoughts.
I concur with, with Mr. Cabral. We do need to be reliant here on, on the science, on the engineering that has been done in the past, understanding that geological sand is different than sand just being washed off of a beach. We're looking for deposits that are hundreds of thousands of years old, not deposits that have washed off in the last 15 years. That sand is dispersed in a very thin, thin layer that is not possible to dredge up. So we have, we have to rely on our experts. We have to rely on, on the science and the history. And with that in mind, in order to get the best bang for our buck, we should not be looking at the areas with the lowest probability that have already been studied. So I would, I would be supportive of looking at this alternative route, to rely on our, our experts and, and our contractors who, who know this field and know what they're doing, that we have the, a higher probability of getting that sand closer to us and saving us money.
Was the low probability Dana, were you talking about Dana, searching Dana Point or skipping Dana Point?
Skipping San Clemente. And we can go with the alternative one, and I'm, I'm...
Did that include Dana Point? Is that, is that your understanding?
I'm okay including Dana Point. But I, I think we could skip north, I think we could skip North Beach.
Okay, well, my thoughts are, I don't disagree that no possibility is no possibility. They've identified a San Clemente area with no possibility. Clearly, let's not waste our time there. If we're looking at Dana Point, Dana Point's designated, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Lesley and our expert and city manager, the low probability is Dana Point is the same probability as North Beach, San Clemente. So why skip San Clemente? Is it, am I missing something? And...
Mayor?
I'd like an answer to that, because that's kind of important. And if I'm wrong, I don't want to, I don't want to waste any money. But it's, if it's the same probability as the area of Dana Point, why would we skip our backyard? Go, sir?
Yes. So when, when we put together the probabilities, we're trying to find a, a simple way for you guys to evaluate these, right? And so, in the case of, what was it? Dohany that was low also, or? It's the information that goes into making that judgment of, of the probability, right? So in the case of, in the case of North Beach, it's what I know that helped me make that low probability. In the case of Dana Point, it's what I don't know. Does that, does that make any sense? It's like, I don't have enough information.
It's not precise science, but it makes sense.
Well, the probability piece is not, right? There's, I mean, there's, there's some speculation and guesswork here. I mean, it's like, you're given a certain amount of information, and sometimes you're like, I got everything I need to know. And then others, it's like, I'm going to have to, to, to make some stretches and some judgments with the information that I have. And so with Dana Point, the reason I made it low is because I don't have a lot of information to, to, to eliminate it or to elevate it. Whereas the other one, I was like, well, this is low, because I can see all of these other cores around it are unfavorable. It's, there's some magic here.
This is important. You may ask a question, Victor.
Do you have any information that suggests, that, that would raise a probability? You say you have none that will discount it, but do you have any that suggests there is?
I, I, I'm thinking about things like the sand that pushes through the breakwater and causes a shoal there that's coming from offshore somewhere. It's right at the end of that point. It's, it should be the end of a literal cell, but maybe the, historically, there's been some leakage of sand around it. There's theories out there that I'm not sure I prescribe to, that, that once the harbor's gone in, there's a back, a back circulation in the current there, and potentially sand moving offshore. I, I don't believe that. I think we'd see it in the harbor mouth before out there. But it's intriguing enough for me to put it on, on the plan.
Okay.
I know that's not a solid answer, but there's, there is some judgment and that goes, goes into this.
I think if nothing else, we, you know, five years, 10 years from now, we need to do another exploration. We can say, all right, we checked that spot out.
Yeah. And I think the other spots, Dohany to San Clemente South, have been checked out by Osborne. He dismissed it. And the Corps of Engineers, they dismissed it.
Thank you. Okay, gentlemen, we need to give our consultants some direction. Again, I'll, I'll just say this, and then I'll be quiet, let you, you fellows speak, and make a motion if we need to. Mark, I agree with your comments about, you know, if 10 years, we could look at again. I'd rather, in 10 years, we have two Army Corps of Engineer projects, which is going to cost us another potentially $40 to $50 million. Within 10 years, I'd like to know if there's sand on, on San Clemente South and, and North Beach. There, the experts are here, they got the Vibra Corps, we'll know once and for all. We need to look at the other areas. I'm not discounting going to high-risk areas, but I think we owe our citizens the opportunities to at least look. So those are my comments and my thoughts.
I mean, it's five, that's still on the flow chart. I mean, the way it sits, the alternate flow chart. We're just able to add Santa Ana. Leave North Beach on there, it's going to do five cores. It is, it is a day. It's one day, but we've got three extra days now. I, I mean, why not eliminate it? That's fine. I, I don't think that there's sand, you know, sand there, but I'm, I'm not a scientist. But if it's on the flow chart anyway, they just, we just work down the coast, and now we've looked at our entire coast between Santa Ana River and hopefully all the way down to Mariposa, not Mariposa, San Mateo.
Does that include any San Clemente locations?
Well, I think, I think they're, they're on his flow chart. Isn't there, isn't North Beach still on that flow chart? Oh, it's not on there? Okay. Well, whatever's on the flow chart, because that's how they've mapped it out. And you know what? If we find sand no place, we're going to be looking for somebody to look other places, and maybe North Beach would be one of those places. If we find no sand between those spots, we can, I think we can assume that there's no sand at North Beach. Maybe we'll find it around it, and then that might be more intriguing.
Yeah. So I, I'll make a motion to direct our, that the direction of the offshore sand began with the, the alternative route that was proposed, and that we defer to the experts on, on that alternative route to find that sand.
And I'll, I'll make a, I'll second that with a friendly amendment, that the, that they decide whether they start north or start south, depending on their logistics.
All the boats coming from Santa Barbara, so.
And it goes back. So just, I, I think we just leave them the flexibility to decide which, which end they start at.
And the flow chart included what locations?
I think they, you start at Dohany, and then you move south, correct?
We keep taking it down.
We had it starting at Dana Point.
Not Dohany, sorry, Dana Point.
Yeah. And, you know, remember that ideally, we want to have about 10 cores at a site that we're going to try to permit to dredge. So some of these, you know, are still somewhat screening level, but, you know, we're, if we do five cores at Dana Point and we move on, it kind of doesn't really matter if we get 10 more, if it's not good, good sand. But, yeah, this is, I think this is a reasonable plan. This does not assume any additional monies coming in. And I just, I also want to point out that the, the state lands permitting process is, as it's progressing, they're making it more and more difficult to be flexible. I'm not sure why. But, you know, once we have a different plan, and we know if there's additional money coming in, we need, we're going to have to go back to them and ask them to open up what we've said we're going to do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I'm going to make another friendly amendment, that when we, when we know that for sure that the money, and the new, additional funding is coming, use the best judgment to modify the plan, and...
Sure. I mean, I'll, I'll accept that on my second.
If, if the, what, what, clarify that again, Mr. Wu, the...
When we get additional funding from OCTA, use the best professional judgment to modify the plan.
They might take him extra money, who knows?
If you get an extra two days of...
Who knows?
But won't they be directing that as opposed to us?
Yeah. I, I, does everyone understand that, that Mr. Wu's friendly amendment, is that acceptable to the maker and the second?
Can I just, I, I just have a concern about it, in that they're going to give us money with direction about what they want, not defer to our plan necessarily. So I would hate to, I mean, I, I guess if I was, was modifying, I'd say consistent with their, you know, direction.
Yeah, of course. Well, they need to consider both, because...
Well, they're going to give direction, is what I'm suggesting.
Unless OCTA's money is going to be a, a write-on of our existing project, it's not going to be a separate, standalone project. So it's going to be incorporated into the workflow.
Yeah, but they're going to give direction as to what they want.
We have to consider their direction.
Yes. Yeah.
Of course. Okay, there's a motion and a second. I, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we, similar to the motion that's been made, slightly modified, that we follow the, the flow chart in terms of the, starting out with the San Mateo, excuse me, Dana Point, San Mateo, and moving down to San Onofre, but that we include the analysis of the North Beach location. And my rationale for that is, number one, this project is being paid for by the Coastal Commission to find close-in sand. Number two, the probability for North Beach is precisely the same as our experts have identified for the Dana Point area. And I would hate to tell our, our citizens, we never looked in our own backyard, when even our experts said, not no probability, not zero probability, but low probability, the same, the same level as some of these other locations. So that's, that's my substitute motion.
Can I ask a, a quick question? Because on this flow chart, they have day one through four, and they list North Beach on here. What, what's the difference?
That was taken out.
That was, oh, that's what was pulled out?
San Mateo, Dana Point, San Mateo, and then over to Pulgas and, and San Onofre. So we're not, we're not up in San, San, Santa Ana.
Can I ask a question of the expert again?
Yeah.
What's, what's, what's the feasibility of adding North Beach back to this process? Can you go to the map real quick? And thinking out loud, I'm wondering if we can maybe start at Dana Point instead of spending the whole day there, try to split the day between Dana Point and North Beach. I'd have to look at the distances. You know, vessel cruises at 10 knots, so it's going to go...
A couple miles, three miles.
Yeah. So, you know, we're going to eat up time between there, so maybe we only get one or two cores at each site, but that would be a way to do it and still preserve the number of days. I, I have, I need, want to look at the numbers and, and the transit times to make sure. But I certainly would like at least two sites or two cores at a site before I dismissed it or accepted it.
Is that answer a question?
We could, we could just add another day. Add another day, and it's just going to take off of the backend. You're not going to get as many days on the San Mateos and the Las Pulgas's and the San Onofre's. The place where there's a moderate chance of finding sand. We're taking it for like, we're substituting the very low or, and low.
There's no second. I'd call the question on the original amendment.
There's a second on my motion? Hearing none, let's call, let's...
Mr. Mayor, if I can just recommend the city clerk read back what the motion was, because there were two different friendly amendments, maybe even three. So I want to make sure that the clerk has and the council remembers what, what the motion is that's before you.
Yes. Let's see here. To direct staff to use the alternate, alternative route proposed, and, let's see here, I'm sorry, I'm trying to read through my chicken scratch of the three different motions here. And with the consultant to determine whether to start north or south. And then with the amendment that with OCTA's additional funding, we go with their direction. They'll be providing direction based on their funding and, and what they'd like to include.
Okay, is that, is that clear?
Yep.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Before we vote, I, I'm just going to state, I, I'm going to be a no vote. I, I don't disagree with the, the, the concept. I, I just think we owe it to our city and to our, our interest in our own backyard to analyze North Beach. I'm disappointed that it's not in there, but, but I like the direction that we're increasing the odds of finding sand. So all in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Four and one no. Thank you very much, gentlemen. And thank you very much, Lesley and our consultant. I appreciate your time. We all do.
Mr. Mayor, I just, I appreciate, I know we have different ideas up here, but I appreciate what, you know, your strong stance on, on North Beach. Maybe at some point in the time, in the future, when we're, we're not urgently trying to find sand, we'll be able to do that.
This is that time, but that time is fast.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, can we take it maybe like a five-minute?
Oh, yeah, let's take a five-minute break. We'll be back at 10 minutes after eight to continue the meeting. Thank you.
Thought we were going to get out before seven.
Maybe, maybe nine. Maybe, maybe nine.
City Council meeting, the next item on our agenda is item 10, the Consent Calendar. Madam Clerk, do we have any oral communications on any of the consent calendar items?
We do have three speaker cards. Item 10B5, which is zoning administrator, regular meeting minutes.
10D.
B is in boy, five, zoning administrator, regular meeting minutes of April 17th. Item 10I, which is a contract award for South El Camino Real Lane reconfiguration, and item 10K, which is a contract award for as-needed contractual planning staff support services.
Okay, gentlemen, did you have any items that you'd like to pull from the consent calendar?
No.
No? Mr. Wu?
No.
No? Okay, we have, we have a motion to.
We have to listen to the comments first, before we move them.
Okay. Let's have the first comment on item B5.
Louisa Spinelli.
Hi there. My name is Louisa Spinelli, and I live on, I mean, I live in San Clemente, and I live on Maxburg Park, and I live right next to the 166 Aragon that we've had a meeting with the zoning administrator on April 17th. And we are still not happy with the situation as a neighborhood. And we've had meeting, we also had a meeting where some of our city councilmen were there for the, for the Maxburg Park, which is what, we're right next to Maxburg Park. And I'd like to read this letter that, because this kind of summarizes, we feel it's, that it's not a finished issue here. So when I, when they first bought the property next to me at 166 Aragon, it, the owner told me that it was going to be a vacation holiday home with maybe a rental unit downstairs. And then, little by little, it's turned into a, two rental units, and now they want to make short-term rental, which is like Airbnb. But the zoning administrator has come up with the idea that because it's within the rules of the zoning, that it does qualify for this, all these, I can't exactly explain it, but the stars, all the stars that make up short-term rentals and all that they have in the city, you guys know about that. But, so now it's like, he have, has put the idea that they could do one year as a trial, and that if there were any issues with this Airbnb, with the downstairs unit of this big building next to me, that, that that would make it, that would give them a trial period for a year, which does make sense. But I'd like to read this letter from John Lyons. He's a neighbor, another one of the homeowners on the park. I live on Maxburg Park and also have concerns about the approval of an Airbnb business on the park, run from San, on the park run from San Diego. Around seven or eight neighbors showed up for zoning meeting at 3:00 PM on Thursday on April 17th to express their concern. Big picture, Maxburg doesn't seem like a great place for a commercial Airbnb. It's a center of a lot of residential light, life with Las Palmas School, St. Clement's Church, and the historic resource Maxburg Park that is right on the street. The zoning administrator gave the neighborhood concerns a lot of thought and made some restrictions, including limiting the structure to one overnight Airbnb instead of two for a year. One specific area that I still think could use a second look is parking. This is our major concern, is the parking. Okay.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
If I could have a moment on this, this item.
Parking.
We can pull the item, and we can discuss it, because it's on the consent and.
Okay, yeah, I want to pull it for further discussion.
Perfect, we'll do that. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
Appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
We'll be discussing that further during the, during the regular meeting. Next speaker?
Amanda Quintanilla, and this is on item 10I, contract award, South El Camino Real Lane reconfiguration and buffered bike lane project from Avenue to Mendocino to South City limit, approving a supplemental appropriation in the amount of $848,900 and making findings under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Okay, I'm opposed to reducing a four lane to a two lane with a center lane. This is a main arterial, and traffic flow is imperative. Oh, sorry. We have seen a traffic flow backing up at North El Camino Real, a PCH, and with the landscape medium, and there is a concern regarding that. There are legitimate concerns also with the expansion of, possible expansion of the I-5 due to HOV lanes. This is something that I've discussed about for years, and at the previous city council meetings, these, I think it was Mayor Duncan, former Mayor Duncan, who stated, who asked Huesway or Fernanda Chivaria if the width or the diameter of the freeway would be expanded, and it was conveyed that yes. At another Zoom, at a Zoom meeting, another person who fought the toll road and I asked the OCT representative if the OCT, if the freeway was going to be expanded, and they said yes, that it would. So with this staff report, I'm concerned regarding Exhibit F. On page 23, it includes a total of 46 collisions. There are two tragic, tragic fatal collisions. 33 collisions resulted in vehicles being overturned. 31 involved hitting objects. And on page 24, Exhibit F, it only discusses ten pedestrian and bicycle collisions. However, I would like to know why there is so many vehicles that are overturned, or they have hitting objects, and just wondering if there was a traffic, recent traffic study. There was a traffic study by the OCTA, but that's back in 2015, which seems outdated. Another thing, when I looked at the staff report, it includes what had happened at the February 16, 2021 city council meeting. This was a 600-page report. I did submit my public comment, as well as Samuel Johnson of the OCTA, I'm sorry, TCA CEO, Samuel Johnson, not Darrell Johnson. However, this, the main topic at that city council meeting was the Los Paternas Parkway extension, so I think this plan just got kind of pushed through under the general plan amendment update. So, you know, we had Nardi, Nicole Walsh, County Counselor, Nardi Khan, Deputy Director of Infrastructure Programs from OC Public Works, and we had Mike Bosamo of Rancho Mission Viejo. So I think that was shoved in there, and I think there really should be a discussion how this is going to slow traffic in this area from Mendocino to the county line. I really think this is a bad decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, item 10K.
Yes, contract award as-needed contractual planning staff support services, and Lois McNichol would like to speak on this item.
Okay, I don't see Ms. McNichol in the audience. We have, I guess we've heard from those items. Rick, you want to pull 10B5? Okay, item 10B5 is pulled.
I would move the remainder.
I'll second.
On that item, I was going to ask, ask for items 10H, 10HI, J, and L to be pulled. I'm not going to ask for those to be pulled. I've had a conversation with the city manager, I just wanted to comment. My concern on those was publicly stating the reserve, the contingency balances in each of those, and my comment, in discussing this with staff, I'm not going to pull those for discussion, but in the future, the city manager's indicated he would, would have a contingency fund in the county, or excuse me, in the city for all of the contingencies. My rationale of that is very simple, and I'll be brief if it's okay, Madam City Attorney. My concern was if you're contracting for work in your house, you have a, you have a tile guy that's, you're paying 50 grand, and you publicly announce that you have a contingency of 15%, that tile guy is going to look at that 50K and say, I've got 15% more coming. We kind of do that in a public setting, and I think we need to maybe be a little more discreet, and so rather than pronouncing our, our internal reserves, once we have a contract with someone, we'll just kind of keep that on the backtrack and, and not make that a public record per se. So I'm not going to pull those items, but I'll entertain a motion for the balance of the items with the exception of 10B5.
Yeah, that was my motion.
Is there a second?
I seconded it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 5-0. That's your 10B5. Rick, did you want to start, or do you want like a staff report or any?
Well, I'll, I'll start it, and if you think you need a staff report, then.
We're modifying the minutes, right?
Exactly. So, yeah, this is an issue, didn't know about it before, was contacted by numerous residents about this, this project, this star, you know, short-term rental unit. And I looked at the staff report from the, I read the minutes from the actual meeting that we had, and, and I think our zoning administrator did a really good job of mitigating a lot of the concerns, but even after that, there's, like I say, numerous residents that have additional concerns about the project, being a two, three-bedroom, two-bath units, one being a short-term rental, one being a long-term rental over 30 days, and an ADU that's also been added. I, I think, like I say, zoning administrator, I think, met the requirements for the city. I think the residents in the area still feel that they would like to express concerns more than to one person, but maybe to seven people. I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, city clerk, city manager, and city attorney, I believe that if I get a majority of my, my fellow council members who would like to send it to the, to the planning commission, that that is the procedure for an appeal.
You need a motion, so you do need a majority, and it's an appeal to the city council.
I think it goes, don't they send it to the planning commission? Maybe, can we listen to our zoning administrator? Okay, could, well, could be.
Good evening. That's a great question. Technically, the city council and the planning commission both have appeal rights for the zoning administrator items. So the minutes that are in, in front of the council are the same minutes that will be in front of the planning commission. I don't, I, I just reviewed the code on this. The city council's right to appeal is to call up an item for the city council's review. However, I, I, I'll have to defer to our legal counsel in referring a matter to the planning commission.
I thought it went to the planning, so.
The way I read it is that either the planning commission can pull up the item and then planning commission hears the appeal, or the city council can pull up the item and hear the appeal. I think if you wanted to refer it to the planning commission, it would be better to pull up the appeal, and at the appeal, send it back down to be heard, rather than doing that all at once.
Can I ask a quick question also? I know this was time-sensitive in that it had to be, if, if the city council asked for, or asked for an appeal, it was before this meeting or at this meeting. Is it the same for the planning? If the, if the planning commissioner decided to bring it back, is it before their next meeting, which they're not having this week?
Yes, so it need, the appeal by either body needs to occur before the, the minutes of the zoning administrator meeting where that item was heard are received and filed.
This is the time.
Okay, so I, then I'd like to call it back for, for appeal to the council.
To the council, right in the planning commission.
Well, if I'm able to do it to the planning commission, I, I think they have a lot of people on there that are really, you know, more suited. I'm sure we can all do our homework on it, but I know they have zoning and expertise that the council might not have.
Do you have that option under the code?
My recommendation, the cleanest way to do it, would be for Councilmember Lothar to bring a motion to pull the item up to council for appeal, and then at the appeal hearing, you refer it down to the planning commission for the appeal.
Would the council have, the council has the authority at that time to hear the matter yea or nay, correct?
Yes, or refer it down.
Send it to the planning commission, or do you want to bring it just back here for a decision? Your call, your, your motion.
You know, I, I'd really like the plant, the planning commission hasn't seen this at all, and there's a lot of, like I say, zoning and ordinance issues that I'd like to have them.
Call it up to here, and then we'll send it back to the planning commission.
Yeah, maybe I'll change my mind in between, or maybe something will be compelling it before, by the time we send it up here, but I.
Is that your motion?
That's my motion.
I'll second that motion to bring it back to the council for a decision on where we're going to place it. Any discussion on the motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'm not clear that, what is a motion?
I move that we, that we, call the motion to appeal the decision of the zoning administrator.
So tonight, if, if we have a majority vote, we are, we're going to appeal this decision.
Correct. Well, not tonight, back.
To the city council, and then once we meet as a city council, we can either decide or send it to the planning commission for a recommendation to us. Is that correct, at the protocol?
Yes, if the majority of the council votes yes to hear the appeal, it probably, it would be set. it would be set whenever, probably not at the next meeting, but the meeting after that. The appeal hearing would come before you, and then you can either decide to hear it or refer it to the planning commission at that time.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. I'll second it. I'm sorry, Victor, did you have a?
Yeah. Here's my concern. I, a lot of these zoning issues are imposed on us by the state of California, and we really have little latitude to act on some of this stuff. They actually tie our hands on, on some of this stuff. I don't know if they're, I mean, we, I don't mind, you know, trying, using our best effort to see if there's some other alternative that, that can be worked out, but I'm, I'm trusting that our staff has done, done all they can to, to, to address those issues. But I, I'm willing to keep trying, but it's, it's not the city's rules or regulations, it's those imposed on us by the state that tie our hands.
I've, I've related to that information when people have contacted me, that, you know, we don't have authority, full authority to, to approve or deny projects many times because of the state regulations.
Mr. Wood, did you have a comment?
Yes. In order for me to support it, I need to hear a reason.
Sure, there, there was a lot of issues that were brought up, available parking, and there was some mitigation done on that. There's also a, it was confusing to the, to the residents about, there was a garage that was converted, and part of this was, well, put a door back on the garage, but there, there was no part in there about actually returning it to a living, or to a garage instead of a living space. There was, there was just, there's, there's a few issues on there that are, were unclear to the residents, and I just think that maybe another bite of the apple on this one is, is worth listening to it. And if there's nothing that we can do, there's nothing we can do, of course.
Okay, those are your reasons. We have a motion, and I've seconded the motion. Any other discussion on the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
I make a, I make a comment.
Okay, comment on the motion, go right ahead, Mr. Wood.
I don't, I don't see enough facts, factual error. I don't see enough, the, enough evidence suggesting that the staff applied the rule incorrectly, so I'm not going to support that.
Okay. We'll call for the vote now. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Okay, four to one on that. Thank you very much. That completes this consent calendar, I believe. Next item is Oral Communications Part Two. Do we have any speakers?
We do. Tony Rubellino.
Mark Almeyer ran with the concept that he was not favorable of national politics breaching the threshold of local politics, and that was his draw to enter in the race to begin with. And Mark actually wrote me a message during the campaign season that he ran, and he said, "I also see now that there is no argument that can convince you that I have the best intentions for San Clemente, and that I believe I have, I can have national views that are separate from my local views. If elected, I hope to show you and the community that it is possible." And what did Mark do when he had the opportunity to address local politics in the San Clemente Times? He actually addressed national politics 100%. Not one of it was related to local politics. Mark, I, I mean, I don't even know where to start. There's just a slew of misinformation here, unless Mark cares to correct me on that after I'm done. Mark, the title of his op-ed was Denouncing Violence of All Kinds, and it just goes from one to 15, and he says this is not an exhaustive list. Number five I want to draw attention to, it's, I denounce the violence of a neo-Nazi group in Charlottesville, which led to the death of a young woman counter protester. I believe you're referencing the, actually, same thing that Trump condemned also, where Trump condemned the violence of the neo-Nazis. So I, I'm assuming that you and Trump are on the same page on this topic, and which all of us are about the neo-Nazis, unless there's something that I'm missing and you care to clarify. Number 12, Mark broached a current topic that's in the news almost daily. "I denounce violence against legal residents of America such as Kilmar Abrego Garcia, who was wrongfully sent to an El Salvador prison without due process." Mark, I'm just asking for some clarification here. You confirm that there was due process violation? Is there something that you might be able to share to kind of confirm your assertion? We have seen reports, we've seen police body cam footage, Tennessee troopers where Kilmar was pulled over and accused of hauling people across for trafficking. We've seen testimony from his wife pleading for protection from Kilmar. We have seen accounts of where she was worried for her life that he could kill her and nobody could do a thing to him or about it, and that he had struck her multiple times on multiple occasions. So Mark, I guess, are you also condemning the violence that Kilmar is accused of against his wife? Please clarify. This is a perfect forum to go ahead and rebut any of the claims that I've made. I'd love to hear it. Thank you very much.
Next speaker?
I would like to take a moment, just very quickly.
A quick moment.
Yes. The, the purpose of that article was to show that we, San Clemente, it was in rebuttal to an article before that, trying to divide San Clemente citizens, to show that we, as citizens, actually have more in common than we don't. And it's unfortunate that the message was lost on some who would seek to divide us more. But I would just encourage the speaker to read the article holistically next time, instead of just looking at specific points that try to divide us more. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, if there is one?
We do.
None, okay. That brings us to the.
Future agenda items.
Future agenda items. Let me, let me mention one. With the Olympics coming to San Clemente, there's a lot of things that need to be done in terms of our overall planning with transportation, housing, security. And I know there've been a lot of people doing a lot of things, and I, I think that probably the city should have its own coordinated effort to look at the issues that are important, to make sure are fixed and are online, so that our city presents itself in the best possible light in 2020, when the entire world is looking at our town. So Andy, I know you've suggested this, a number of other people have as well. I think, Victor, you've been involved in the process a long time. So I, I think, I would ask that we form a, a city ad hoc Olympics, what do you call it, coordinating, planning, committee of some sort, just to make sure that we have a formal group of people, because we're all getting emails from different people saying we need to do this, we need to do that, and.
Some of us have been working on it too for four or five months.
A lot of people have been working on it for a long time. Yeah, that's right. The surfing groups have, you have, other folks have. So do we need to, I guess, why don't we agendize, Mr. Mr. City Manager, in the next meeting, why don't I ask that we agendize the creation of a local planning committee for the purpose of making sure that when the Olympics happen, we, we've put our best foot forward and we're prepared for the onslaught of visitors and the, and the notoriety that this city's going to get.
I'll second.
Okay, do we need a third for staff report?
Yes.
Victor's a third. Thank you. The next question I have is, we've completed the, the pilot program for the goats, and I guess, Mr. City Manager, the question would be, when do you envision discussing? I know there's discussions with the homeowner associations, talking to Mike Kay and others that provide that kind of service. Do you have any thoughts on, on how the city could move forward one way or the other on that concept?
Yeah, there, there are planned meetings, both with the homeowners associations in the community, at least the master associations, and then also with Mr. Kay. I've also had a, some conversations with a much larger group that own many hundreds of goats, and what their availability would be should either the city or homeowners associations be interested in, in exploring that. I would think, boy, sometime in the, probably a month or so, we should have enough information to come back to the city council with some pretty good information.
Okay, another, another, another couple, two or three meetings from now.
I think so.
Are you ready for some, with some specific proposals?
I believe so.
Okay. Do we need to agendize that in any way, or just instruct you to kind of bring that back to us at, relatively soon, but at a proper time when you've had a chance to look at all the options?
It's up to you, but I think I would, I think it's important enough to follow back on that pilot project and bring information to the city council. So I, I'm glad to put it on, or if the council wants to agendize it, they can. But I'm glad to put it on once I have that information. It should be relatively soon.
Okay, then let's, let's bring that back at, in due course.
Perfect.
All right, thank you. Anybody else have any future agenda items? As was mentioned earlier, it's not a agenda item, but you suggested that the council presentations on updates happen at the beginning of the meeting, and if that's the pleasure of the city council, I kind of was trying to save some time at the beginning, because we were taking 15 minutes or more on those presentations, and I was trying to shorten the meetings a little bit.
I just, I don't think we can put a time limit on it, but I, I think, you know, remind everybody that to work through it relatively quickly, just maybe list the event you were at, and they were great, as opposed to, like I say, going elaborating on every meeting that you went to.
That was my, that was my concern.
That's a suggestion.
Is that the consensus of the council?
That's my, yeah, I agree.
Yeah, okay, I see a bunch of nodded heads, or at least majority.
I'm okay with there to be at the end of the meeting or at the beginning of the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
But I share with you, Mayor.
And we'll agendize at the beginning of the meetings from, from now on, if that's the pleasure of the council. Thank you.
Mayor, I share with your concern that a lot of time it gets too long.
Thank you. Any other future agenda items, gentlemen? Okay, hearing none. Let's have the council member reports.
I'll start.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Victor.
I'll start at the end.
I'm timing it.
Actually, first, I want to make a couple of comments. There was, I didn't mention them at the time, but earlier it was mentioned that there's comments about the coffee chats and what was going on there. I just wanted to mention, and they did mention that I went. I've gone several times and, for, for whatever reasons, I haven't returned. The second thing was mentioned that three city council members were at the DBA. Some of us were invited. I am actually the liaison to the DBA, so I am always invited to those meetings. That's why I attend. That was a designation by the city council, as we all have given assignment, and I attend all the, the DBA meetings. We have other meetings besides that, that very public meeting, and that's why I was there. I wasn't there, and that's why I was asked to speak too. So anyhow, I just wanted to clarify that. I, I'm going to go rather quickly, since we don't like spending a lot of time, but sometimes there's a lot of things that go on, and you have to report on them. I'm going to just, I attended the speakeasy, community discussion. We had a lengthy discussion on sand retention and sand replenishment. Attended the downtown business association meeting on issues of the Olympics, parking, and the car show that's coming up. Attended the Medal of Valor Award ceremony hosted by OC Sheriff Department, recognizing the courage, valiant acts, and merit of OC officers and community members. I've been meeting with several organizing groups here to consider initiative to address beach restoration and fire protection that will come up next year. I'll report more on this as it's developing. I took her, took a tour of San Clemente by helicopter with OCA FA to view the fire threats to San Clemente and the adjacent community, including the airport fire. You get a different view from, from the sky. We also went down the coastline here in San Clemente to observe the sand and the resources. We also went by helicopter to view the potential helicopter staging act is, location that we might be considering at the OCFA when there is red flag conditions here in San Clemente. I attended the springtacular Easter egg hunt, which is at Vista Hermosa Park. It's a great event. I think most of us were there. Attended the lease renewal ceremony at San Onofre State Beach. This event celebrated the 25-year renewal of certain portions of existing state park. The renewal ensures that iconic San Clemente surf and campgrounds will be protected for the next 25 years. It also makes significant changes to the footprint that currently exists that may give us some relief, and, and I've met with the, the, the people that will now be in charge of the land that's adjacent to San Clemente, the, the Marine Corps base, that may, may give us a better opportunity to clear some of that. Hosted a, a meeting with local surfer and longtime Olympic surf organizer, Greg Cruz. We were briefed on surfing events at the Japanese and French Olympic surfing competitions. Got an update from him on the LA 28 Olympic organizing efforts. Have other planning committees, meetings, I think we invited you, you two, Mayor, that's coming up either next week or the following week. Had a meeting with Janice Lim of the ACCOC Tourism Committee regarding her efforts to collaborate with other cities in Orange County on the Olympic Games. They're one of the first groups that are starting to organize. I don't know what role they'll play ultimately, but we, this is one of the groups that you mentioned we have to organize and coordinate with. Spoke with elected representatives of San Juan Capistrano and Dana Point on collaborating with their cities on tourism during the Olympics. Given their close proximity, their, their current activities are hotels. We, we think there's a good opportunity for this tri-city to get together and develop some activities related to the Olympic, Olympics. Spoke with elected representatives, well, spoke with OCTA regarding intercity transportation funding for the Olympic Committee. They're starting to look at that. Met with Daryl Johnson of the OCTA regarding the sand issue and funding for the Olympic trolleys, if there's going to be such a thing. Those are the kind of things we need to keep, keep the pulse of and see if we can get the right money for. Spoke with the SCAG representative to begin collaborating efforts on the infrastructure changes they are considering, and the other opportunities to create vibrant and enjoyable experiences for the tourists and San Clemente residents and the businesses here. Express my personal concerns with the temporary train stop at Tressles that they are considering. I, I, I think, and maybe we'll get direction at some point in time from the city. I express my personal concern, but I think, you know, San Clemente train stop is, is the right approach, but we'll see where we go. Attended Little Mermaid at San Clemente High School. Great play, great talent at, at the high school. We have some very talented students who did an extraordinary job. Attended the pump track opening, I think with all of you. Very excited to see how that opened up and how it's worked with the partnership with private business and the, the city. Attended the SONG CEP Advisory Committee Planning Meeting. We continue to work on our efforts to deconstruct the nuclear power plant and, and move as soon as possible, and as soon as we can find a suitable-like location for the stored nuclear fuel. Attended the City Investment Advisory Committee this week. Our minutes were on the agenda, and we have other items related to our fund investment coming up next week. Attended the OCFA Legislative Advisory Committee. Were reviewed and appined on 18 significant pieces of state legislation impacting our community. Most notably, we support a legislation that will give a credit to homeowners that spend their own money hardening and protecting their homes from fire. Don't think it's going to pass, but we, at least as a fire authority, sent that out. Attended the SCAG Cal Cities Conference as a delegate, because you unfortunately had to give a State of the Union, State of the City address. And that, that organization, as you well know, as our representative, has significant financial money, and particularly for the Olympics, they're organizing independently in effort to, to do infrastructure in Orange County. Attended the State of the City at Bellicalina. Attended the annual Cinco de Mayo celebration at Maxburg Park, despite the rain. There's a lot of good entertainment, Las Palmas Ballet, Folclorico, Mariachi, a whole bunch of activities, cotton candy, popcorn, the whole works. So it's a great event, and I think all of you sort of participated too. I wrote two independent letters to our state legislators objecting to current legislation, SB 634, that would have prohibited San Clemente from adopting and enforcing any ordinance to address homelessness. As a result, and I did that instead of bringing it to the, the committee, just so you, to the, the city council, because it was being considered that week. And as a member of the Cal Cities, as. And as a member of the Cal Cities, as a representative of the Cal Cities, we needed a letter. And as a result of almost every city in Orange County writing, they gutted that piece of legislation. Attended this week the Cinco de Mayo celebration here at City Hall. Today, I attended the OCFA Human Resources Committee and tested. And I have two other quick things that I wasn't sure whether, whether I was going to bring up, but we have a couple of photos I wanted to share with you on two different items that...
Those photos handy?
So, the old city hall, as you'll remember, a couple of years ago, we boarded them up. I got a lot of complaints about that. And lo and behold, the next week, next slide, we just threw a little paint on it and they look a lot better. The second thing I wanted to share with you is Rod Malott shared a couple of photos with me when we were looking at the lifeguard tower. You'll remember the lifeguard building a year ago. This is for the people that say, we don't have sand or we're going to lose all our sand. Remember that there was no sand below that building. It was, the waves were crashing underneath the building.
The footings were almost underneath.
The footings were underneath. And now, look at it, this is after all the rain this, this year, all the storms, it's still there. One other one, the lifeguard tower. Again, I think this is Tower Nine. This is the before. The sand is there. It stays, it's remained. So, I just wanted to point that out to the residents that, you know, the work that the city is doing, the city council is doing, it's good, the sand is remaining, and we need to get more sand on our beaches. That's it.
Hopefully closer in.
Yes. Absolutely.
Okay. Mark, would you like to go?
Sure.
Hey, so, right before Easter, went to the Springtacular. Thank you to the Friends of San Clemente for all the help on that. Thank you, Rick. Also went to a three-day conference at Cal Cities up in Sacramento, where we advocated on behalf of the city and on local issues, working with Cal Cities, issues on removing encampments, on homelessness, on sober living, on the California Coastal Commission, Affordable Housing Bond, and, you know, copper wire theft prevention, all sorts of bills and Assembly bills and Senate bills that we advocated for. Got to see The Little Mermaid, a couple of my students in there. It was fantastic production, well done. Also, got to plant a tree on Arbor Day. That was fun. On the same day, there is the Earth Day beach cleanup down at the pier. Fantastic, staff did a great job there, too. Then right after that was the pump track. That was fun, in the rain. Then, oh, sorry, I forgot to mention, at the Cal Cities, had a chance to meet with Senator Blake Spear and Assemblywoman Davies, among others. So, it was a great, productive time up there. Thank you for supporting the trip up there. State of the City luncheon, also the Cinco de Mayo Festival, again, great time. My kids thoroughly enjoyed it. Face paint, they had climbing wall. Oh, my goodness, they had a human foosball event there. That was, that was just so much fun. The kids had a blast on that. Also, one last thing, huge incredible achievement to one of our teachers at San Clemente High School, Mr. Aaron Bro. She won the Orange County Teacher of the Year. So, this is a huge achievement. So, well done for her. Yes, I believe that's everything.
That is a huge achievement. My wife's won the San Diego County Teacher of the Year about 10 or 15 years ago.
That's incredible.
Thank you. Rick, go ahead.
Sure. Yeah, I did a lot of the same stuff that everybody else did here. And I also had a couple of meetings with our chief, Chevalier. I'd like to call him up here, because I'd like to defer my time to give us some crime stats on the third quarter here. I think the residents will find that more interesting than what I did.
All right. Good evening, Mayor Noblock, members of the city council, members of the city staff. Justin Chevalier, Chief Police Services for San Clemente. So, quarter three stats for fiscal year '24, '25, which encompasses January, February, and March. Overall, we had 5,758 calls for service. 3,000 of those were assigned, and the other were observed or self-generated by our patrol deputies, so they're extremely proactive. Total arrests were 241. 119 of those were for felonies, 83 for misdemeanors, and 39 were warrant arrests. Our Priority One response time, which is anything that requires lights and sirens, or what we call a Code Three response, was four minutes and 38 seconds. The industry standard for our agency, or excuse me, the agency standard is five minutes, so we exceeded that by almost 30 seconds, which you guys know every second counts. And special shout out to Orange County Fire, our partners there. For a lot of the medical aid calls, they usually beat us there. So, I mean, they have a huge fire truck that they have to drive, so kudos to those guys for doing that, and Chief Shane back there. We did have 87 total accidents and a total of 2,160 citations that were written. And special shout out again to the RSVPs, our volunteers. They're saving us a huge amount of money by being out there and writing those parking citations, which is obviously a huge deal for the city of San Clemente. And with that, that is it for the Q3 stats. I want it to be brief, try to keep it under a minute and a half, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Outstanding. Thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you. Mr. Wu?
Calendar was packed with lots of events for the last three weeks, so I'm going to keep it very brief for each. Attended the 2025 Medal of Valor event to honor the men and the women of Orange County Sheriff Department. Afterwards, I attended the ACCOC Special Briefing called Strengthening Integrity in Public Leadership. Attended the lease renewal ceremony at San Onofre State Beach. Shadowed our city homeless outreach workers, Cardina Choi, as well as Deputy Garcia to observe firsthand the homeless issue in town. I was very impressed by the way they handled this challenge with compassion and skills. Attended Arbor Day tree planting event at the Municipal Club Course. After that, I joined the pump track grand opening ceremony. Was raining hard, but everybody was excited. In the same night, I watched the musical The Little Mermaid performed, performed by a San Clemente High School student. It was a wonderful performance. Got a soak again by the rain, but everybody stayed put. Attended the Crime Victims Ceremony at Orange County Crime Victims Monument in Santa Ana organized by the County District Attorney's Office. In the afternoon, I toured the construction site of OC TA project at the Mariposa Pedestrian Bridge with our director, Public Works, Mr. Revenstoff, before the bridge was completely gone. Wednesday 30th, attended a community event. It was a surfboard art show and auction at Drew Brophy Art Studio for the Gratitude Garden Preschool in town. The kids made beautiful artwork on surfboards. Attended a SCAG Regional Conference as a policy committee member on regional transportation. Then on Friday, May 2nd, attended the State of the City Luncheon. The next day, attended a Asian American and a Pacific Islander Heritage Month Celebration at San Gabriel Mission Playhouse in the morning. Then in the afternoon, attended the Cinco de Mayo Fiesta at Maxberg Plaza Park. Besides being special for AAPI and Hispanic communities, the month of May is also Jewish American Heritage Month. I want to take this opportunity to acknowledge all of the minority groups in our city, your culture, history, and contributions to our country and our community should always be remembered, recognized, and celebrated. Thank you. And then lastly, on Sunday, May 4th, attended the Crystal Apple Awards Event organized by Just a Surf Club. I want to thank our local LDS church to host this event to recognize some of our high school teachers. That's all.
Thank you. There were some amazing events handled in the last two weeks, none of which I attended because I was on the East Coast on family vacations. But thank you, gentlemen. You did, you did your man's work. Thank you.
Well deserved.
Thank you. Mr. and Madam City Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report, except it's a pleasure to serve the city of San Clemente. Thank you.
The pleasure is ours. Mr. City Manager, do you have anything to report?
Well, I can report...
Be briefer than the council president.
You know, I can report that you need five city managers to keep up with you guys. I'm telling, because I end up, I end up kind of doing all these things with you, but it's, it's a pleasure to, to work with you guys, and it's a lot of fun. But anyway, we do have some contracts. Yeah, you can see how busy, I think there's a lot of things going on, and I'm glad that you guys reported. I think a lot of residents don't realize just how many tentacles there are to city government, and you guys do a great job covering a lot of things, so. Anyway, we have a few contracts here. The John Robinson Consulting to provide cross connection control management plan in the amount of $28,740. Blackert's Power Services for providing generator bank testing in the amount of $52,668. Fisher Compliance Incorporated providing sewer system maintenance plan in the amount of $29,900. Trauma Intervention, sorry, Trauma Intervention Specialist providing professional and emotional practical services in the amount of $85,78. And SWCA Environmental Consultants for providing nesting bird surveys for the Avenida Montalvo Canyon and trail improvements in an amount not to exceed $11,790. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. If there's anything else, let me just say that we adjourned tonight's meeting in memory of retired city clerk Myrna Erway. Myrna was the city's second city clerk and served in that capacity for 22 years before retiring in 2007. During Myrna's 22-year tenure, she attended 861 city council meetings. In 2001, Myrna was named City Clerk of the Year by the California City Clerks Association. She was, she was well respected among her peers and many city managers that she worked for, and the various city council members she've worked with throughout her career give her high marks and high regards, as I do, having worked with her 20 years ago. Myrna was known for her quick wit, her sense of adventure, and she was certainly, will be missed by all who know her. She was a staple of this community, a pillar, and for those that know her, will miss her greatly. And we had wanted to adjourn tonight's meeting in her honor. So with that, our next, I'll make a motion that our next regularly scheduled city council meeting is, will take place on May 20, 25. Closed session will begin at 4:30 PM, and the regular business meeting will begin at 5:30 PM. The meeting will take place in the council chambers located at 910 Cali Negocio, second floor, San Clemente. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned.